The hour of 6:30, having come and gone, I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, December 10, 2024, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Vitavir?
Here.
Alder Vitavir is present. Alder Wehelié?
Here.
Alder Wehelié is present. Alder Bennett? Alder Bennett is present. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Conklin is present. Alder Curry?
Here.
Alder Curry is present. Alder Duncan?
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Field?
Here.
Alder Field is present. Alder Figaro a call?
Here.
Alder Figaro a call is present. Alder Govendarajan?
Here.
Alder Govendarajan is present. Alder Uguere?
Here.
Alder Uguere is present. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Knox?
Present.
Alder Knox is present. Alder Latimer Burris?
Here.
Alder Latimer Burris is present. Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Madison is present. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is present. Alder Mayatzi? Alder Mayatzi is present. Alder Rumel is excused. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere?
Here.
Alder Revere is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. As usual, I will remind us that we are here to do the business of the people of the city of Madison. And I would ask that we do that in a respectful manner and that, in particular, we refrain from using profanity in our remarks, regardless of who you are, council member, staff, or registrant. I'd also ask that people extend kindness and grace wherever possible tonight. And I would remind folks that while public registrants are allotted three minutes to speak and alders are allotted 10 minutes to speak, no one is obligated to use that full amount of time. I also want to welcome Zara Winter Shalik, who is from Madison Country Day School and is shadowing Alder Barbara Harrington McKinney tonight. Thank you, Zara, for joining us. The first item we have tonight is one of our regular presentations of poetry. It's Legisstar 85972, a poetry recitation by Charles Payne. Charles?
I will be reading the new Jim Crow Pantome, written by myself. Imagine a large herd of zebras grazing on grassy, green pastures. From the scrub, a lion sprints towards the optical illusion of black-and-white stripes. Instincts strike. We dash like a gust of wind from a violent storm. Thunder is dazzled striped flesh in motion, but the lion continues its pursuit of meat. From the scrub, a lion sprints towards the optical illusion of black-and-white stripes. A subset of diagonal stripes loses its herd. Stripes stop moving up or down. The lion pounces on this picturesque painting of stripes. Lion snaps bones like weak plywood, rips skin like a canvas from its frame. A subset of diagonal stripes loses its herd. Stripes stop moving up or down. Spectators watch from a safe distance away. Lion snaps bone, bones like weak plywood, rips skin like canvas from its frame. Jaws clamp around neck, remove air from lungs. Spectators watch from a safe distance away. Pressure breaks spine like dead weight upon rope. Jaws clamp around neck, remove air from lungs. Unable to fight back, they have no known predators. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to also just recognize that we get these regular poetry recitations because of our poet laureate program and thank the Madison arts folks for making that possible. And thank you again for being here tonight. Our next item is an Honoring Resolution, Legisstar 86369, honoring and celebrating the life and work of Lucia Nunez. It's my honor to read this. But before I do, if I could have a motion, please?
To adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Whereas Lucia Nunez was a leader both in the Latinx and the LGBTQIA+ community for her entire life. And whereas Lucia brought people together, worked with children in education, and worked to support the disenfranchised. And whereas as the first director of the Department of Civil Rights for the city of Madison, she worked not only with employees and residents, but also with local businesses as she assisted them in finding and working with people of color. And whereas Lucia Nunez initially moved to Madison in 1999 after accepting the position of Executive Director of Centro Hispano of Dane County. And whereas in this role, Lucia worked to help school systems create more equitable classrooms in response to the tremendous growth of the Latinx community in Wisconsin and throughout the Midwest during the time. And whereas in 2003, she became Deputy Secretary of the Wisconsin Department of Workforce Development, where she confronted statewide issues facing the Latinx community, rural women, and indigenous communities around the state. And whereas Lucia then worked as an administrator of the Equal Rights Division for the state of Wisconsin. And whereas in 2006, Lucia Nunez became the first director of the Department of Civil Rights for the city of Madison and served in that position until 2015. And whereas Lucia then left city government to accept a position at Madison College, where she served as the Vice President of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. And whereas in all of her position, Lucia's work was driven by a strong belief in education as an agent for positive change. And whereas Lucia has been honored as one of Wisconsin's most impactful LGBTQ+ community members by Latinos Organizing for Understanding and Development, a statewide initiative dedicated to promoting community engagement opportunities for Latino artists. And whereas she was further recognized by the city of Madison for being an outstanding leader and the first director of the Department of Civil Rights. And whereas Lucia was a member of the inaugural Dane County Tamara Grisby Office of Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board. And whereas Lucia Nunez's warmth and sincerity were genuine and her legacy was established throughout her career and life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council honors and celebrates the life and work of Lucia Nunez. And we have members of Lucia's family here to accept the parchment. If they'd like to come forward. We do have a few alders wishing to speak. Alder Knox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really cherish this opportunity to say a few things about Lucia. She was a counterpart. Whereas she was director of the city's DCR, I was the director of the Office of Equal Opportunity in Dane County. So we shared a lot of shared responsibilities in the city and the county. But what a lot of people don't know is we also shared some personal experiences. We kind of found out that she spent her early childhood in St. Croix in the Virgin Islands. And I spent some of my early years in St. Croix as well. So we often talked about fond memories about the island and our St. Croix accrusion experiences. And so, yeah, she definitely will be missed. And not only as a colleague, but as one of my collaborators in the fight for social justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to shout her out because I got to work with her at the college when she came onto the college, up until I quit around 2016. But it was because of her leadership in that new office that was created that some of my early work was able to thrive and get the investment from the college early on. So the only thing, too, I want to admit about Lucia, she knew how to have a good time. So her office was not necessarily a quiet office. The hallways around her office were not necessarily a quiet space. So she knew how to have a good time and invite others to have a good time with her, too. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Alder. I'm going to exert executive privilege and call in Director Davis of the Department of Civil Rights.
Thank you, Mayor. It was my privilege to work with Lucia for all 10 years that she served at the city of Madison in the Department of Civil Rights. As she served as our first civil rights director, I was in the position of affirmative action manager. And over the years, we just grew closer together with a really close friendship. She had the utmost care and concern for my family, my children. And I really cherish the time that we had together at the city. There are many days, you know, the work that we do can be very, very trying. There were many days that we talked about the ups and downs on the job. We would talk about the ups and downs in her personal life, ups and downs in my personal life. And I recall one particular day. I was in my office and Lucia came back into the department. And she seemed to be in a rush. She had just come from a meeting. I don't know if it was related to some investigation or something, but she came into my office and she said, you know, Norm, come here, I need to talk to you. And it was very urgent. And so I got up from my desk and went into her office. And she closed the door. And she explained there was something that she needed to share with me, but she just wasn't sure how to share it. And I said, Lucia, I said, you know, we're friends. Just tell me, you know, whatever it is that you want to say. And so she paused for a moment and she leaned in really close. And she said, "What does it mean, 'black don't crack'?" And I laughed and laughed and laughed. And Lucia was like, "What's so funny?" You know, she thought that she had witnessed some sort of microaggression. And so I proceeded to explain to her what "black don't crack" means. If you didn't get that joke, you can see me after. But she had such a pure spirit and such a love, not only for our work, but for people, genuine love for people. And it was my delight to work with Lucia Nunez. And I will certainly miss her.
Thank you, Norm. I just want to lift up the incredible work that Lucia did, particularly for the city of Madison, but for our whole community, and ask that, in her memory, we strive to tell people who are doing good work in our community when we see it and not wait until they're gone to celebrate them. And that we take to heart how fleeting life is. And remember that as we go about our work tonight and every day. May her memory be for a blessing. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none? We've come to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on tonight's agenda? Alder Latimer Burris?
Yes, Mayor. I need to recuse myself from, let's see, Legislative File 86221, censuring Alder Charles Mayatzi for conduct unbecoming of an alder.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitavir?
Disclose on items 57 and 65. I am an employee of the Department of Health Services, and that will not affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. On items 61, 63, and 70, I'm an employee of the University of Wisconsin, but that will not affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional disclosures or recusals on items on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. That will bring us to the presentation of the Consent Agenda. Alder Duncan, are you? Present Figaro a call?
Consent Agenda is moved. The recommended action listed for each item on the agenda include public hearings, except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, or two items which alders have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced on the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Agenda items that are supermajority items. Supermajority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Legisstar File 86264, authorizing the city of Madison on behalf of the Greater Madison MPO to accept a federal funding grant for $106,100 from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to implement the MPO's Round Trip TDM program and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into the grant contract and state municipal agreement. Agenda, Legisstar Item 81155, amending the 2024 adopted Mayor's Office Sustainability Improvements Project Capital Budget to accept $2,232,335 grant from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, US EPA. If awarded, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the associated grant agreement with the US EPA if awarded. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to contract with sub-precipients Sustained Dane Project Home Urban Triage and Operation First Start if awarded to implement the Climate Resilience Starts at Home Growing Energy Efficiency Indoor Air Quality and Green Jobs in Madison, Wisconsin projects. Legisstar Item 86074 is a substitute, amending the 2024 Police Department Operating Budget and authorizing the mayor and chief of police to sign, accept a U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice-Assistant Comprehensive Opiate Stimulant and Substance Use Site-Based Program. If the grant awarded is $1.6 million to expand the Madison Area Recovery Initiatives to address substance misuse disorder. Agenda Item 86075, amending the 2024 Police Department Operating Budget and authorizing the mayor and the chief of police to sign the Wisconsin Department of Health Services Opiate Abatement Efforts by Law Enforcement Grant Awarded Contract in the amount of $95,935 for the Madison Area Resource Initiative Pre-Ares Opiate Diversion Program. Agenda Item 86170, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement and authorizing, one, a budget amendment to the EDD 2025 Capital Budget, TID 46, to fund $930,000 in tax increment finance loan to EC Residential LLC or its assigned needs to construct approximately 197 units of affordable housing and 151 underground parking stalls located at 5546 Element Way in the University Research Park in Tax Increment District 46. And two, a budget amendment to the EDD 2025 Capital Budget, TID 46, granting $4,365,000 of tax increments from the fronted 46 to the Community Development Authority for the purpose of preserving affordability in that project. Agenda Item 86180, amending the Public Health Budget to accept grant funds from University of Wisconsin and create a 1.0 Data Analyst Project Position for the Epidemiology and Data Science Team. Agenda Item 86182, amending the Public Health Operating Budget to accept grant funds from Wisconsin Department of Health Services and create a 1FT Communicable Disease Coordinator for the Communicable Disease Program. Agenda Item 86187, amending the Parks Division 2024 Adopted Capital Budget to accept an additional $150,000 in private donations from the Madison Parks Foundation for purpose of constructing a water play feature at Renobon Park. Agenda Item 69. This is going to take me a minute here. Okay. This is File 86200, Year-end Appropriation Resolution to amend the 2024 Adopted Operating Budget to increase general fund appropriations by a total of $8 million by appropriating a net amount of $1.5 million from the general fund on assigned balance to meet projected shortfall in agency budgets and increasing the general fund's transfer out of the Capital Projects Fund by $6.5 million related to American Rescue Plan Act reallocations. Transferring $7.3 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds from the grant fund to the general fund, reducing general fund balance applied by $849,364 related to the ARPA reallocations, making transfers of appropriations within agency budgets, making revenue adjustments to non-general fund agencies based on third-quarter projections, clarifying for federal transit financial reporting purposes that a portion of the Metro Transit subsidy from the general funds is used to pay debt services in the Metro Transit Enterprise Fund, and amend the 2024 Adopted Capital Budget to appropriate funding from non-borrowing sources to various capital projects and transferring funds across capital projects to comply with federal arbitrage rules. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Legisstar Item 86198, authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Madison to accept and execute grant agreements for two fiscal year 23 of YHTP grants from HUD and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute associated 2025 YHTP contracts with Outreach, Briopash Youth Services, Inc., Center for Community Stewardship, and the Institute for Community Alliances. The recommendation from the block grant committee is to adopt. Legisstar Item 86218, amending the contract between the city of Madison and Bayview Foundation, Inc., governing the receipt of a grant for $394,018 from the Dane County Urban Water Quality Grant Program. Authorizing the city of Madison to amend its agreement with Bayview Foundation, Inc., by extending its expiration date to June 30, 2025, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute agreements with Bayview Foundation as appropriate. The recommendation from the Community Development Block Grant Committee is to adopt. Legisstar File 86219, awarding up to $1,136,440 in Community Development Block grant funds through the Community Development Division Capital Improvements for Nonprofit Housing Program to four nonprofit housing providers, Bramble Hill Apartments, Bramble Hill Institute, Northforth Apartments Corporation, the Road Home and Housing Initiatives. And authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into agreements with those agencies to implement the specified rehabilitation projects on District 2, 6, 10, 12, 14, and 18. The recommendation from the Community Development Block grant is to adopt. Agenda items excluded by one request of alders or two speakers registered by noon on December 10. Legisstar Number 85814, creating Section 28.022 to Section 00696, 00697, 00698, and 0000699 to the Madison General Ordinance to change zoning for property located at 940 to 1050 South High Point Road, 1051 South Pleasant View Road, 902 Landmark Trail, 940 to 1050 South High Point Road, 1051 South Pleasant View Road, 902 Landmark Trail, 940 to 1050 South High Point Road, 1051 South Pleasant View Road. And I think I'm repeating myself here, right? Yes. So this is creating the ordinance numbers I stated before, 696 to 699 for those addresses. The full language is on the agenda file. And we have speakers registered for that one. We also have six. Agenda Item 10, which is Legisstar Number 85803, which is a public hearing for a new license at Isakaya Shinyah, Inc. At 419 State Street, we have a register for a Class B beer, Class C wine, 50% alcohol and 85% food. We have a registered speaker for that. Then we have Item 22. And that is Legisstar Item 86370, Report of the Mayor Submitting Alder Committee Appointments. Then we have Item Legisstar 85251, Amending the Parks Division 2025 Adopted Operating Budget to Remove the Paid Parking Pilot and Associated Revenues and Expenditures. The report from Finance was to put on file, so it's been pulled by myself. Legisstar Item 85415, Approving the Preliminary Plot of the Hill Valley and Property Address as 940, 1050 South High Point Road, 1051 South Pleasant View Road, and 902 Landmark Trail. We have registered speakers for that. And Legisstar Item 86221, Censoring Alder Charles Mayatzi for conduct unbecoming of an alder. We have speakers for that. Items introduced on the floor, we have Legisstar File 86434, amending Section 39.038I3.B of the Madison General Ordinance related to the Equal Opportunity Ordinance to align with state law. Alder Martinez Rutherford put that one forward. And it's referred to the common council on the meeting of January 14. Is there a meeting on January 14? Is that correct? Okay, good. I forgot to look in that. All right. So that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other items that alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Madison?
Not a remove or an excuse, but I forgot to disclose or didn't catch it in time. For item number 46, legislaw number 86198, my organization also works with the Center for Community Stewardship, but we don't benefit from any of this.
Thank you. The clerk will note that. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yes, I didn't hear the reason, but I do want to go on record as polling. Item number 22, report of the mayor, 86370, submitting Alder committee appointments.
That item is already excluded, Alder. Alder Rahili?
69.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional requests for exclusion from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, go through that again. The following items are supermajority, so we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. All require 15 votes. 49, 50, 56, 57, 61, 63, 65, and 66. And on the following items, the recommendation is different from what's printed on the agenda. On item 46, the recommendation is to adopt, as it is on items 47 and 48. The following items will be excluded. Items 6, 10, 22, 69, 75, 76, and 92. We have one introduction from the floor and no corrections. Everybody get that? Should I go through again? Looks like everybody's good? All right. So then, on the consent agenda, present figure, I'll call a motion.
Move to adopt.
Move and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded. And we'll move on then to public comment. Just remind folks, I will call several names at a time. Please be ready to come forward when the person before you is finishing, and you have three minutes, we will time you. First item that we have folks wishing to speak is agenda item 6, which is creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances regarding zoning of property at 940 to 1050 South High Point, 1051 South Pleasant View, and 902 Landmark Trail. On item 6, our first registrant wishing to speak is Brian Munson of District 13, representing Veridian Homes, to be followed by Mary Beth Brownie-Seline, to be followed by Matt Brink. Brian?
Good.
I'm sorry, before you start, Alder Duncan, did you have something?
Madam Mayor, can we have item 6 and 76 as one public comment since they relate to the two?
They are related. We could take them together in order, but they're two separate items, so people have time. Thank you, Alder. Sorry, Brian, go ahead.
All right, well, thank you. Again, Brian Munson, Principal Urban Designer with Vandewell &amp; Associates, and excited to be here tonight to kick things off about the discussion on the Hill Valley neighborhood here on behalf of Veridian Homes. And this is the culmination of more than a year's worth of effort to get here tonight. That includes two neighborhood meetings. Thank you, Alder Duncan, for coordinating those. It includes numerous, countless conversations with staff, lots of design iterations back and forth, amendments and changes, that got us to the Transportation Committee's 62 recommendation and the Plan Commission's unanimous recommendation. Go to the next slide. But before all of that starts, we start with our homework, and that is looking at what do the adopted plans call for. Next slide, please. This, of course, being the High Point Raymond Road 2016-2017 master plan. This is superimposed over the property. What exactly those recommendations are is a blend of residential uses. And so we started with that as kind of a given. How do we create a neighborhood that's walkable, mixed residential, that's supportive of the needs of the community, and reflects the adopted plans, including the comprehensive plan? Next slide. But to do that, we have to then bridge that to the topography on the site. And so we took the recommendations, took the actual conditions on the site, and developed, next slide, please, a comprehensive look at the development of the entire property. And what you see here is 1,700 units in a walkable street grid, full spectrum of housing, full lifecycle opportunities for residents of the community to find housing from entry level all the way up to age-targeted in any format of housing you can think of. This reflects a lot of the goals and recommendations that the city places for development throughout the community, and we're happy to be here tonight to present that. I would note, this is not going to happen overnight. This is step one of many, many steps. This will be plotted and implemented in multiple phases over the course of many, many years. But it'll all be under the guidance and direction of city staff and the commissions. Individual final plats will be filed for this project that will represent the final development pattern for all of this, and that will really be informed by that conversation, specifically as it relates to transportation. The design of the streets is something that we set in motion, but is finalized by the city staff. So there's a lot of opportunity to address concerns about High Point Road through the implementation of this project, but we're happy to be here tonight, really fulfilling the goals and statements of the neighborhood plan and the community plan. So tonight, we ask for your approval for items number 6 and number 76, so that we can continue down this path and continue to work with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mary Beth Brownie-Seline of District 20, to be followed by Matt Brink, to be followed by Dan Day. Do we have Mary Beth? Does not look like we have Mary Beth in the room. Is Mary Beth online?
Mayor, I don't see Mary Beth in attendance.
Thank you. And we'll go on to Matt Brink of South Town Drive, representing Veridian Homes, to be followed by Dan Day, to be followed by Wendy. Oh, that's the end of the speaking. Brink, Matt Brink. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It is very nice to see you tonight. My name is Matt Brink. I'm the Director of Land Development for Veridian Homes. As Brian alluded to, we are very happy to be here tonight to discuss Hill Valley. Again, this is the culmination of a good year-long worth of work, a lot of meetings with city staff, and then the neighborhood meetings that Brian alluded to as well. Very excited to bring this plan forward. The culmination of getting here and getting through some of the kind of primary issues that have been addressed, primarily some parking issues on High Point, that was addressed at the Transportation Commission. We feel we came to a very nice resolution with staff. We received a 62 recommendation there, and then that went into Plan Commission where we did receive unanimous approval. And as everyone knows, when a developer comes forward with the plan, we must follow the adopted plans that are before us, the comprehensive plans, the neighborhood plans, meet with neighborhoods, meet with city staff, and then come to an ultimate plan. And we feel we have done that with the plan that is before you tonight. There have been some questions about the design of High Point Road, how the traffic will be integrated, and what we want to state to that effect is, Veridian will ultimately work with city staff to implement the design that they essentially direct us to put forth. What Veridian's role in this part of the project is to dedicate the right-of-way. City Madison staff will design the road, and then we will implement. Veridian does not have a direct say in how High Point Road is designed and how the traffic is ultimately implemented. So it is our job to, again, provide the right-of-way and then ultimately implement the plan that staff puts forward, and we will continue to do that. Again, thank you to Alder Duncan for the efforts that he's put forth to facilitate all the meetings that have occurred to this point and all the city staff that we have met with. Again, we've built a great rapport with them, and we will continue to work with them as we implement the design and bring forward much-needed housing to the City of Madison. So thank you. We are here to answer your questions tonight, and we look forward to working with you further. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dan Day of District 9, also representing Veridian Homes.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Dan Day from Denofia-Cacken Associates, representing Veridian Homes. Here tonight, just to really kind of emphasize a little bit more with what Brian and Matt have said, you know, as part of the team that, my team, that actually implements these things, you know, we will, you know, providing the right-of-way exactly what the city needs, and then we do the implementation of the work that is being required through there. Obviously, we do have, you know, some input, but really, it's ultimately the design of the City of Madison and how that ends up being. This is about a half-mile segment of High Point Road. You know, High Point Road in the City of Madison is about five miles. This is really the last piece of it to be dedicated in the City of Madison. Each of these phases that we will be doing, you know, were developed, those engineering plans are developed as we go with each phase, and the, you know, the section on the northern part of High Point along our project is planned to be in one of the later phases of our development, as we said, was probably at least 10 years' worth of work across this site. Anyway, that's really all I wanted to get across, is just that, you know, we're here to answer questions and look forward to any questions that you may have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the registrants we have wishing to speak on item 6. As Alder Duncan indicated, item 76 is the same topic. Without objection, we'll take those registrants next. Seeing no objection. On item 76, which is approving the preliminary plat of the Hill Valley property, addressed as 940 to 1050 South High Point, 1051 South Pleasant View, and 902 Landmark Trail. We have three registrants wishing to speak. Amanda Morris of District 20, to be followed by Laura Morris, to be followed by Darcy Becker. Do we have Amanda?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Amanda Morris, and I am a resident of Welton Drive, and my main concern about the proposed plat are the traffic. The current plat, the preliminary plat, calls for one collector street, which is a street that carries between 1,500 and 10,000 vehicles. This will run east to west, from Pleasant View Road to High Point Road. However, the Neighborhood Development Plan from 2017 and the City's Comprehensive Plan from 2023 both call for a total of three collector streets and an additional through street. Those three collectors, they call for one east-west, two north-south, and another through street from east-west. Basically, in the current plat, it's concentrating all of the traffic from the new development onto one collector street. Right now, Welton Drive will be extended through, which is labeled "Street N" on the plat. Currently, our street is a local street, which means it carries up to 1,500 vehicles. With this new plan and it being the only collector street for this new development of over 1,700 households, that would greatly increase the traffic on our street, where we already have a problem with cutting through and speeding. And I'm just worried that Welton Drive and other neighborhood streets will be forced to carry traffic volumes well beyond their intended capacity. The lack of connector streets and through streets limits route options. It makes more secure, it reduces the feasibility for non-motorized modes of transportation, and a plan with higher connectivity would allow travelers to take a much more direct path on lower-traffic streets. The City's Vision Zero Initiative aims to increase safety for all who use our roads, and this area with new proposed neighborhoods should be a top priority. I'd also like to call your attention to High Point Road. According to city staff, a consultant came this past June and collected counts of around 11,600 vehicles, which would mean that High Point Road is now considered an arterial road, and redesigning arterial streets for pedestrians usually involves adapting roadways, including reducing or narrowing travel lanes, which the city refers to as a "road diet", which is not part of this plan currently. So I'd ask for the members of this council to either vote to send this back to the Transportation Commission for more discussion, or to approve the preliminary plat with conditions for adding additional collector streets and through streets to control traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Laura Morris of District 20, to be followed by Darcy Becker. Do we have Laura?
Hello, my name's Laura Morris, and I would like to touch on the consistency or the lack thereof related to the High Point Raymond Neighborhood Development Plan. A few speakers have talked about the importance of being consistent with that plan, and as it regards density, the plat as presented shows an abrupt transition from housing mix 1, which is detached, single-family housing, which surrounds this plat, to housing mix 4, which is for multi-unit apartments up to 50 dwellings in an acre up to four stories in height. The neighborhood plan specifically states that transitions between types of housing should use housing mix 2 and 3 before introducing mix 4 to result in a better neighborhood feel and compatibility with existing neighborhoods. And as the previous speakers spoke to, it also, the neighborhood plan also calls for multiple collector streets, and the plan is drawn with one. So a lot of conversation has been about High Point Road, but my concern is as much about the traffic inside the new neighborhood as it is High Point Road. I'm fairly certain that all people, whether renters or homeowners, prefer slower speeds and less traffic out their front door. I also note that this is one of the largest developments taken on in Madison, and at least the developers said, in the last 20 years. And I think it's important to get this right for all of the existing neighborhoods, for the existing neighborhoods as well as the new 1,700 new households that are going to live west of High Point. Development of this scale is new to all of us, including those on the city council, and so I ask that you slow this down and defer approval until changes can be made so that it is consistent with the High Point Raymond Neighborhood Development Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registrant wishing to speak on this item is Darcy Becker of District 20. Darcy?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Darcy Becker. I live on Welton Drive, and I also request that the city council ask Veridian to modify where the apartment buildings are adjacent to Welton Drive. Our High Point neighborhood is all single-family detached homes, R1 zoning, and as prior speakers spoke to, the city's plans are to transition between R1 and R4 by buffering R1 with smaller R2 and R3 styles of homes, all of which are included in the Grand Veridian Plan. There's no great explanation for why the apartment building should be adjacent to all R1. We would much prefer to not have the most concentration of new residents be at the intersection of High Point Road and Welton Drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the registrants wishing to speak on items 6 and 76. Are there questions for any of the registrants on either of those items? Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I wonder if someone from Veridian could come. Thank you, I appreciate you coming up. Could you respond to this issue about the collector streets? That the neighborhood plan apparently calls for three collector streets, and the critique is that you're showing only one. I seem to recall, though, in your comments, that you were also going to be working with city staff in the actual layout of some of the streets themselves. Could you comment on that and explain the tension here between the concerns of the residents and what your plans are as developers?
So if we look on the east and the west side of this project, you've got Pleasant View Road on the west side, running north-south, and High Point Road, we do have some connections north.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
There we are. Thank you. So we'll start off. If you look at this plat, on the west side, we have Pleasant View Road. On the east side, we have High Point. We have developed neighborhoods north and south that we're going to pick up streets and extend in. The city guides us to, whenever we have a plat that abuts streets, to extend them when they come into the project. And that is what we've done on the east side of the plat. We have a connection at Welton. We also have additional connections, three more connections, as you head south out to High Point Road to help distribute traffic to that regional north-south collector. On the west side, we have two platted streets west of Pleasant View that we are connecting to. Ancient Oak to the north, and the name escapes me to the south from the Research Park project. So those are kind of our east-west givens. The neighborhood plan anticipated kind of two east-west connections spanning from Pleasant View to High Point. We've broken that down into one kind of east-west that goes from Welton to the southwest corner of the project, and that's a reflection of the grades. corner of the project, and that's a reflection of the grades. As I saw on the slide, there's a lot of grade on this site. We go up and down more than 90 feet twice. And so as a result, we really had to look very closely at the street grid to make sure that we could create, so this is a great example, you can see Ancient Oak from the northwest going to Welton on the east. Thank you, Tim, I believe. On the south, there's a collector heading from Pleasant View to east of High Point. If you can go to the next slide, you can show, I can point out how we've designed the grid. One more. There you can see the topography, a lot of it. What we have proposed is to connect Welton Drive down to the connection in the southwest corner as the through-street, but then accent that with sub-connections throughout. So there is a dense grid of streets. That allows us to do two things. One is to try to address the grade as we come down the hill, back up the hill, and down the hill again, and make sure that that collector is a bike corridor and a walking corridor. We have a bike path on the north side of that collector that we've designed to have no driveways to cross, but we've designed it to try to address some of the grid and the grade to transition east and west through this site. We would not be able to do that if we had to have two, because we just, we need the linear distance to make that happen. However, it gives us some strengths. We then connect internally with a broad spectrum of different sized streets. We've worked with city staff to extend Waldorf from the south up to the roundabout in the middle, connect that roundabout point to the west up to Ancient Oaks. So the two grids come together at that center point of a roundabout for traffic calming purposes. But we still have that connection point throughout this neighborhood. And we have a dense street grid that's compatible with the Green Streets Guides throughout the neighborhood, attached to all the different land uses and scaled to land uses adjacent to them. The final piece that that grid modification allows us to do is create a north-south open space corridor through this project. That's not totally reflected in the neighborhood plan. We have an extension of the Midtown Commons Park, which we've been working with staff to redesign. We have a trail network that'll be able to go through that open space, through the Stormwater Open Space just to the north of the roundabout, and eventually up to an extension of the Newberry Park. So we've been able to, by modifying this grid, create one crossing point that'll allow folks to go north-south through the entire plat, sorry, two crossing points, through the entire plat, to allow north-south traffic with even less grade. So if you're on a bike, you don't have to climb the hill and then come back down to Lois Lowery Lane where it comes up, you could go through the middle of this project north-south. So a lot of nuance, but a lot of it is driven by, driven by the grade constraints on this site and the need to look at every single block and understand how we're going to deliver housing, how we're going to deliver walkability, and distribute traffic through the entire neighborhood.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, is it for Veridian?
Or whoever from the development group. I, so on the Transportation Commission meeting, we saw two different options, option one and option two, and the option that the committee ended up recommending, that provided 17 additional homes, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And this plan reflects what the Transportation Commission overwhelmingly supported?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. And then I saw that this plan has a lot of single-family housing in it. I know that's, you know, consistent with the neighborhood plans. But our city has talked at length about increasing missing middle zoning options, or housing options. Even though there are more duplexes here, if, if it were possible, would you provide more missing middle options like duplexes, quadplexes, if our zoning allowed it in this, as, using this as an example?
Yeah. So to speak to the, the plan, one of the changes that, there's two changes that happened through staff, direct staff input from the planning staff as we presented the first concept to then what we've submitted. The first has to do with the parking and the fronting of units out to High Point Road. They've specifically asked us to, could we put front doors along High Point Road as a traffic calming element to lessen the feel of a highway north-south through this neighborhood? And so we revised the plat to do that. But in order to do that, we have to make sure that those units, those homes have convenience parking for guests or deliveries, which is also a side benefit of offering additional calming on High Point Road. So we went to the Transportation Committee requesting an amendment to incorporate that parking, because that really helps support those units. We were able to do that, and, and with the support of Transportation Commission, that is reflected in this plan. As far as the missing middle housing, we've actually expanded the missing middle housing in this plat. This plat contains alley-loaded, single-family, conventional, single-family, and I would note, eight different gradients of that. Everything from entry level, small lot, 31-foot wide on an alley, all the way up to luxury move-up housing options in a single-family format. So a significant range of housing there. We've accented that with attached product, attached twin homes that are both age-targeted as well as market rate twin homes. We've included townhomes in this project, which will be for-sale attached product, again, going right to that missing middle, to both offer some transitions within the project to multifamily, but diversify the housing. And then final piece of that is the multifamily housing, which will give another wide spectrum of housing options within this neighborhood. So we think this is that, a very healthy balance of supplying housing choices and formats and price, as well as integrating some types of housing that aren't as prevalent in the market. We're happy to do that. We think that was a good recommendation from staff, and it's something that we continue to try to seek opportunities for in other plats.
Certainly, thank you. So what you're saying is that people do build missing middle housing, duplexes, quadplexes as possible in this city, we just need to do more of it?
We are working to try, you know, the townhomes, I'll admit, are unique. We haven't had many of those since a comparable-scale project many years ago, Grandview Commons, where we have some townhomes. We're trying to integrate that again, hearing that feedback and trying to find ways to bring choices in housing into the neighborhood.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lottimerberes, is it for the development team?
Yes, and I want to just thank you for your presentation. And I really just wanted to ask you, we got a lot of letters about it. Certainly, you work in development, so you're always looking, you know, taking feedback. But my question is, why does the neighborhood see it so differently? And then I want, I'm wondering if you're caught under what happens in my district, District 12, and we have a lot of development going on, on, in my district. And I don't think a lot of people know, for example, when it comes to parking or traffic issues, that, you know, by right, developers, by the city's ordinance, by right, developers can put up, you know, a 300-unit building with no parking. So was that clarified? I mean, I'm trying to figure out where the disconnect is. I know that it costs developers and the community a lot of time and energy and frustration, and obviously you don't want to be a developer that develops things that people don't like. And we're not quite yet at the city where everybody walks and takes a bicycle.
Yeah. Well, as we started with, I think this, this proposal is a reflection of the adopted plans. And oftentimes, those plans, you know, may have been on the shelf for a while, not everyone has seen them. But we really strive to try to reflect those in this neighborhood. So from a land use standpoint, we think it's very compatible with what was projected, both from the comprehensive plan and the neighborhood plan. The transportation issues that go along with any plat of this scale is understandable, because there's concerns about, you know, we're, we're developing what is a 230-acre infill project at this point. Everything around us has been approved and/or built. So we're fitting into a network of streets that already exists and that folks call home. So it's understandable to voice concerns and, and we take those to heart. I think the thing that we can offer as a, a olive branch is the process, in that, as Matt and Dan mentioned, we are setting up the framework for this project to move forward. We're setting up the zoning, we're setting up the preliminary plat. There's a lot of steps that have to happen before anything gets built. A shovel's not going to hit the ground next week. If we're lucky, we'll begin construction early next summer, because there are a lot of steps left to go through. Those steps include the final plat and the infrastructure design. And as mentioned, the city has a say in both. We will plat this in, in steps, we'll build this in increments, and we will design it in concert with input from the city. The city will be the, the city staff will be the final designers of all of these street infrastructure pieces. So the design of High Point Road, the design of internal roads of this project are all things that we'll have lots of conversations with city staff about. And if there's a desire, the city has time to have a conversation about what does High Point Road look like? Because right now it goes from four lanes to three lanes, to two lanes, to four lanes, to two lanes, all within about a mile. And so there's a lot of cross-sections due to the fact that this property has been passed by, by the development of the adjoining neighborhoods. So the city staff will take a look at all that information. They have looked at the transportation needs of the corridor, whether it's an arterial or a collector, they're studying that all the time. There's opportunities to have broader conversations as a city of what do we want this corridor to be in the future? And then effectively, what's going to happen is we will be tasked with implementing it. The city will say, here's the cross-section, you need to give us a bike path, which we're already going to do, a terrace, a parking lane, a travel lane, whatever it is. They'll turn to the development team and say, your plans need to reflect this. And then they'll approve the plans to be built. And so this will be built in phases, but it will be reflective of what the city tells us we have to build.
Alder Duncan?
Just one of the questions that was, or I guess concerns that was being brought forward and suggestions was for us to potentially refer this to the next council meeting. What would that impact be for, for this development if we were to refer it?
Yeah. We would have some pretty significant impacts, and that's because of the timing. So casting forward into what is it going to take to have streets in the ground next, this time next year? Because that is the process we're looking at right now. And that's as fast as we could get to construction for Phase One, which is just a portion of the site. We will have to go through a final plat submittal, review and approval by the city. We will then have to have the city of Madison design the infrastructure, and that takes time. From there, we have to grade the site, install utilities, build streets, before we can pull a permit to build a house. Our goal on this project is to have residents moving in, not next year, but the following year. In order to do that, we have to get streets in the ground before it freezes. We can't put asphalt down in these temperatures. So right now, as we sit from today, if we're able to get to approval today, working with city staff and the committees for the approvals and the design work, to get to construction, to open up a street, to be able to build a house, we are right at that limit. Because it does take almost a year to get to that final construction of just the first phase. So a delay tonight represents a significant risk that we wouldn't be able to finish that street before it freezes, which means that would push that street construction out into 26, which means we wouldn't have residents being able to move in until later in 26 in the summer, which is a significant differential from being able to have residents potentially move in early in 26 and deliver some of this much-needed housing in a closer timeline.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions for the development team?
Not for the development team.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Alder Harrington McKinney?
I do want to ask the mayor, at what time could we have the, a staff presentation that Tim Parks has prepared?
We'll take the staff presentation when we take the items up.
Okay, okay, because I think that that, that will definitely clarify some of the questions that have been raised at this point.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue with questions on item six and 76, so we'll go back then to public comment. And the next item with someone wishing to speak is item 22, the report of the mayor submitting Alder committee appointments. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Gregory C. Jones of Fitchburg, Wisconsin. Mr. Jones?
I've got to stress it, man. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Gregory Jones and I represent the Dane County NAACP. Here to speak on the removal on the apartments, right?
That's what this one is, yes.
On the replacement apartments to various committees. And if I have it right, these committees include the Alcohol License Committee, Park Commission, Metropolitan Planning Commission, Sister City Collaboration, the Water Utility Board. Is that right? All right. And I understand that these recommendations have been submitted, and I'm here to speak in opposition of the recommendations for the following reasons. This action raises several questions. If the current Alder runs for reelection, how likely will he be appointed to a committee? So the first question is, this removal and then replacement, does it affect his long-term opportunities to be a committee member of this body? This action is contradictory to democracy. It limits the input from District 18 residents. If I were a resident of District 18, I would want to know who my individual council member is that I voted for, that I may have known for years. There's a connection between voters and people who represent them, and it ought to be recognized and factored into this discussion and decision. Thirdly, how likely are residents of District 18 to reach out to appointees whom they do not know? Easy answer, right? We should have in place a process that includes continuity and continuation of connections between these elected officials. Elected officials play an important part in public policy, state level, county level, and the city is no different. How likely are these appointees to reach out to residents that they do not serve? Public service is about service. I believe that any individual that I vote for is going to serve me well. They'll have the attention, they'll have my attention when needed, I'll have theirs. These appointments at this level are not conducive to that process, that relationship, and the outcome. More importantly, the next two or three questions are more critical to me in terms of the appointment process. First, what monitoring or follow-up plan is in place to continue an inclusive electorate in this, for district residents? Removing someone at this point and replacing them raises a big issue for me. I would be hollering and screaming about, who is it?
Mr. Jones, that's your three minutes.
That's my three minutes?
Yes.
Let me just finish with this.
That's your three minutes, Mr. Jones. Thank you.
Part-time representative is less than acceptable solution. Should be changed.
Mr. Jones, thank you. We have one other registrant on item 22, James Bennett of District Five wishing to speak.
One of the most important things of this council is their code of ethics. Code of Ethics, as the gentleman was just stating, wants to represent the public, as well as the city of Madison, and yourselves properly. One needs to consider all things when removing an individual from city council, and that is, does that person possess the character and abide by all the things of ethics, all the things demonstrated on the Code of Ethics that are outlined on the Code of Ethics? You need to ask out your, ask yourself that question. In addition to that, when one remains on city council, it poses a liability when they violate those issues. And those, that liability can just extend all the way to their own homes. That's why when I served as an agent at Prudential, I spoke before a lot of city council members. We asked them to please look at their homeowner's insurance for HO3 form, to make sure that your liability, which is usually a million dollars, covers that, which is extends to that. If you're a renter, look at your HO4 forms to make sure that covers you for that. These are very important issues. As far as removal of the person, as a military guy, I took a vow to protect the women, the children, my family, the country, the Constitution. And I hold that, and that's any, against any threat, foreign or domestic. This is domestic, and I would not give up the fight, I would take up the fight for Ms. Reyes, I would take up the fight for also Michelle and others. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask folks in the gallery, please to not share any demonstrations of support for any speaker, and that's contrary to our policies. Questions for registrants on item 22, and then I will note, I did forget item 10, so I'll circle back to that. On item 22, questions for registrants, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you. Greg Jones, please.
Mr. Jones?
Come up.
Please. Please. Go ahead, Alder.
Greg, would you complete your statement? You ran out of time. Could you go ahead and complete your statement that you had to add?
Alder, are you moving an additional minute?
Yes.
Is there objection?
Let me get it.
Seeing no objection.
This is an additional minute?
An additional minute.
Two other statements that I had here was, what's in place to communicate and inform District 18 residents? If there is nothing in place to continue the communication between an elected official and them, it's a disservice by the policymakers of this body. And then lastly, the two things that I would ask is this. Who's going to look out for the interests of District 18 residents when it comes to city policy, comes to budget, programming, service delivery, and so forth? They need a representative who is constant and currently in their mix. That's it.
Thank you. Are there additional questions on Item 22? Seeing none. Then with apologies, we'll go back to Item 10, which is a public hearing on a new license for Izakaya Shinya, which is located at 419 State Street. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Hugo Liang of District 2, representing Izakaya Kruyama. Hugo?
Hi, my name is Hugo.
Hi, I'm sorry. Not to interrupt.
Alder Bennett?
Thanks. They're the registrant in my district, and they said, and they can't speak if they would like to, but I let them know they don't have to.
They're registered to speak, Alder.
You can speak if you want.
You're welcome to speak at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm excited to open my restaurant in the neighborhood in Madison. And I'm doing a very unique Japanese street food. Nothing like sushi, but it's more like a very traditional food. And hoping everyone can come and try it out. Excited to be here.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Then that will take us to Item 75, which is amending the Parks Division 2025 adopted operating budget to remove the paid parking pilot and associated revenues and expenditures. On Item 75, we have two registrants wishing to speak. The first is Nicholas Davies of District 15, to be followed by Jennifer Argalender. Do we have Nicholas?
Yes, good evening.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I think it's great having the Parks Department doing some proactive transportation demand management, where unbundling parking is a common and powerful TDM strategy. There's no such thing as free parking, only subsidized parking. And the park system does not subsidize any other mode of transport to such an extent, or even charging people to park their canoes and kayaks. We're effectively incentivizing arrival by car specifically, the least sustainable and least scalable mode of transport available. Parking in a park is a limited resource that only a small portion of parks have at all. And when there isn't even a nominal cost associated with it, you get people using that resource opportunistically. The parking lot becomes the attraction rather than the park itself. People park at the park and go to a sporting event, go into the office, or just blast music and tailgate. This can lead to actual park visitors being shut out. That includes the relatively small proportion who wouldn't be able to get to the park on foot, on bike, on transit, or use nearby street parking instead. A nominal charge for parking can reduce pressure on the lot and help ensure that it remains available to those who truly need it. That nominal charge would also level the playing field for transit and encourage people to consider active transportation if it's an option for them. But rather than adopting a city-scale paid parking scheme all at once, the proposal is to conduct a pilot. This was adopted as part of the budget just last month, and this exemplifies the fiscal responsibility that people are calling for even after the referendum. This year, parking enforcement was one of the few departments to actually bring in more than it costs. And the value of parking on event days is considerable money to just leave on the table. Sometimes the city implements a parking program, a pilot program, just to check a box on the way to rolling it out citywide, without any intention of measuring the success of that pilot program first. That seems to be where the body-worn camera pilot is headed, for example. But I don't think that's the intent here at all. This limited pilot is an opportunity to learn what the challenges and impacts of paid parking in our parks would be. And we have yet to see whether those challenges and impacts would be deal breakers or not for a larger program. But we're not going to learn what there is to learn about this program unless we actually let it begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jennifer Argalender of District 12. We have Jennifer. Does not appear that we have Jennifer in the room.
Mayor, I don't see Jennifer online.
Thank you. Any questions for the registrant on Item 75? Seeing none. Then we'll go on to, oh, we did Item 76 already. And we'll go on to Item 92, which is censuring Alder Charles Miyazi for conduct unbecoming of an Alder. On Item 92, our first registrant is Amelia Royko Mauer of Arena, Wisconsin, to be followed by Kristi Kumar, to be followed by Eugene Crissler. Do we have Amelia?
Can you call her last? She's on an airplane.
All right. Then Kristi Kumar of District 3, to be followed by Eugene Crissler, to be followed by James Bennett. Kristi?
My name is Kristi Kumar. My pronouns are she, her, hers. And I work at the Department of Civil Rights and lead the city's Equity and Social Justice Division. But today, I'm here as a City of Madison resident. I'm here as someone who has spent her career working towards interpersonal violence prevention, creating cultures of consent, and building transformative futures. I'm also here as someone who believes that no one is disposable, that we're actually all indispensable. And I come as someone who has both experienced harm and as someone who's caused harm. Holding all of this, I'm grappling with the fundamental question of, how do we respond to harm in a way that is just? Unfortunately, we are socially conditioned to resort to punishment, to carceral logic, and to disposing of people. But punishment and accountability are not the same thing. Accountability requires five key elements. Number one, acknowledging responsibilities for one's actions. Number two, acknowledging the impact of one's actions on others. Number three, expressing genuine remorse. Number four, taking actions to repair the harm. And number five, no longer committing similar harms. I also believe that we cannot force anyone to be accountable. It has to be self-driven. So what happens when the accused individual has avoided accountability, continues to cause harm, and has more power than the accusers? What if they're using that power to avoid accountability? While public shaming doesn't help people become better, a public accounting of harm and consequence can be a necessary tactic. There have been devastating consequences on this matter. And so for me, voting in favor of today's censure resolution is an appropriate tactic for publicly disclosing the negative impacts on those behaviors on our community. There's been some chatter about restorative justice as an alternative. I think we need to be more disciplined in our uses of such important terms. Restorative justice requires a certain amount of willingness by the person who has caused harm to take accountability for their actions. At this time, it is clear that level of willingness is not there, and rather, a more pernicious type of victim blaming has emerged. To be an Alder is not a right. It's a privilege given by the people to serve the people. And the people are asking for an accounting of wrongdoing. Our responses to violence should require us to humbly ask questions that honor the fact that we may have all harmed and may have all harmed. Please consider the following questions as you make your decision tonight. Is this conflict, harm, or abuse? All three should be approached differently. A misunderstanding is different than hurting someone, which is different than intentionally exerting one's power over someone. Are the people who are experiencing harm being adequately supported? What do they want to see? Have we asked them? Have we asked them? Is all the attention going towards the person accused of harm? What type of prevention solutions are we also forging? Finally, this will happen again. An elected official will cause harm and/or abuse in our community. How do we want to learn from this so that we can respond differently next time? Thank you.
Ms. Kumar, that's your time. Thank you very much. I will say again to please refrain from making any demonstrations of support from the gallery. Our next registrant is Eugene Crissler of District 20, to be followed by James Bennett, to be followed by Gregory C. Jones. Eugene?
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Esteemed members of city, common council, I stand here, I stand before you today with a heavy heart to share the story of how I've been unjustly treated and robbed of my livelihood and standing in this community. As a victim of discrimination, I have experienced firsthand the ways in which the systems meant to protect us have failed. The loss of my job due to unfounded allegations and unbiased justice system has cast a dark cloud over my life, making it increasingly difficult to provide for my family and maintain a sense of dignity. Born and raised in the city, I have always strived to be a contributing member of our community. However, the unethical prejudices of some have led to my being ostracized and blacklisted, even by those who should have been my allies on this very council. The First Amendment, the cornerstone of our democratic freedoms, has been violated through the retaliation and suppression of my voice. I have been silenced, my story dismissed, and my pleas for justice have fallen on deaf ears. As I navigate the challenges of unemployment and the stigma of unwarranted accusations, I am reminded of the generational impact and marginalization and disenfranchisement that has plagued our community for the far too long. The trauma and identity crisis I have endured have only served to further erode my sense of belonging and purpose. Yet I stand here today with my wife, a testament to resilience and the power of the human spirit. I am a father, a husband, and a person of worth, determined to break the cycles of injustice that have plagued us. I have learned valuable lessons, not just from my own experiences, but from the struggles of those who have come before me. Now I ask you, esteemed members of the council, when will this black cloud be lifted? When will we, as a community, embrace the inherent worth and dignity of all our citizens, regardless of their past or the circumstances they have faced? The time has come to address the systemic issues in that robbed so many of their livelihoods and rightful place in our society. I implore you as the leaders of this city to take bold and decisive actions. Let us work together to build a future where discrimination and unethical prejudice are relics of the past, where the value we each bring to our community is celebrated. And lastly, and where the pursuit of justice is not merely a lawfully idea, but a tangible reality. Thank you for your time and attention. I stand ready to work aside you all to create the change we desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is James Bennett of District 6, to be followed by Gregory Jones, to be followed by Michelle McCoy. James?
So many wonderful things have just been stated. One is accountability and true remorse. Starting in 2000, pardon me, in 1993, when Charles graduated from Lefrolic High School, he began his career on crime. He was cited for many different issues, namely domestic violence, arrested for domestic violence, creating great bodily harm. He continued that throughout till today, when he just last received his last judgment on, not shouldn't say judgment, but least offense on 11/20 of this year. When he joined the city council in 2021, he had already obtained many different arrests that continued throughout that time when he was dating Ms. Gloria Reyes. He employed or asked for Gloria Reyes to help him get elected when she was just became, or they started dating just when she became a detective in the City of Madison in 2002. I have a problem. My problem is, is I have four sisters, seven daughters. That's one. The second problem I have is women have worked very hard for equality, for their rightful place in our society, for the rightful voice in our world. And when I see someone, and have to read someone putting their hands around a woman's neck, in the military, it only takes 11 pounds of pressure sustained for seven seconds to kill a person. That's not good. When a man takes a closed fist, hits a woman in the face, that's not good. Not just because my daughter is here, who's my seventh child, when we came to Madison in 2017, but I thought, I was against her being on city council. I thought that being here, she'd at least be in a safe environment. When I see that she isn't, in a safe environment, I fault myself. I let her down. I let my family down. I let my deceased wife down when she was only nine years of age, because I always vowed to always take care and protect my family. Charles, you put me in a very bad position. If I meet your daughter Danielle or your sons, I'm not going to badmouth you. I'm just going to look at them and say, your father needs help. Embrace him. Love him. Because we all need some healing. But you need to take accountability and recognize.
Mr. Bennett, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gregory Jones of Fitchburg, representing the NAACP of Dane County, to be followed by Michelle McCoy, to be followed by Linda Ketchum. Mr. Jones?
This body initiated the hiring of an outside law firm to conduct an investigation of whether Alder Miyazi actions violated City of Madison Administrative Procedure Memorandum Number 35, and did his conduct violate the state and federal laws. The motion to censure, we understand, is a public condemnation of the behavior of an individual. But based on city attorney Michael Haas's statement to you all, this resolution should be removed and examined for consistency and completenesses, and completeness. I oppose this resolution. The preambulatory clause of this resolution should highlight the relevant legal precedents, former relevant resolutions, and past actions on this issue. It does not. Should, in other words, provide the reasons for the actions. The operative clauses are actionable solutions to the problem raised earlier. This clause in the resolution encourages this individual to consider the impact of his continued presence on the council. This is a very vague and not connected action in this resolution, and questionable. Why isn't the resolution mentioning any of the positives? I've seen resolutions all my life talk about individuals that have been censured, removed, and so ever. And there's always positives and negatives. Why isn't there any positives in this resolution about community engagement of the 18th District? Positive resolutions about the body-worn camera project in that district, the Knutson Drive reconstruction, the Warner Park Community Recreation Center experiment. None of these positives are mentioned, which in my mind, as a citizen, just wonder, why wasn't the direction, why wasn't this thing more complete? Even though the resolution focuses on the censure of the conduct, there is room to identify the positives for the residents of District 18. They ain't there. Due process, let me finish, is a requirement that legal matters are resolved according to established rules and principles, and that the individuals be treated fairly. Due process applies to both civil and criminal matters. We know that. An investigation was conducted, findings presented, investigators determined whether the allegations were sustained, not sustained, or unfounded. Investigators identified behaviors that were found to be inappropriate or troubling. Let it be known that the NAACP encourages girls and women who've been subjected to sexual harassment, abuse, discrimination, and assault to use their voices to speak out about experiences and to stand united against these actions. And we will, each and every day. We are committed to supporting speaking out all forms of sexual harassment, assault, and abuse. But we also stand up for fairness, freedom, and social justice.
and abuse, but we also stand up for fairness, freedom, and social justice.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Michelle McCoy of District 17, to be followed by Linda Ketchum, to be followed by Noah Lieberman. Michelle?
I, Michelle McCoy, will never forget the day, March 15th, when I told a secret that I kept for many years about the abuse that Alder Charles Miyazee has done to me. That was the day that I no longer was afraid of him. Charles, I am four foot nine. You are 10 times the size of me. For you to throw me on my couch and choke me, I'm amazed that I'm even here. It has showed that you are a coward over and over, and you can sit and look at me, but I know I stand in my truths. I know the words that I speak, every chance I get, are true. You did not destroy me. I am no longer scared of you. March 15th is the day that I became free. I became free of you, and I've spoke out, and everything that I've spoken has encouraged others to speak out and tell their truths. We're not all lying. There's multiple of us. There's seven of us. For you to attack every single one of our credibility and not take accountability, shame on you. I am disgusted by your behavior. Madison, this is not a secret. We have all spoke out to all of you. We have told you our stories. We have told you what he's done to us and how we were paid, as you invited him to the same events that we were. We'd have to call each other and cry in tears about the suffering that we had to endure while he was coming up to us and trying to talk to us, and we had no choice but to show him with respect. You have exposed texts by Juliana Bennett, which were altered, and you have shared emails that I have, was nice to you. All you did is show the world that no matter how cruel and evil you were to me, I still was kind to you. That is no more. I will not be nice to you, and if you come up to me, I will yell and scream for help. If I am in the same room as you, stay away from me. Today, I speak in solidarity for Jamie Johnson, who has been crying and asking for help for many years, for Armand Miyazee, who I talked to on Saturday night for five hours, and we were trying to process why you treated us like this. We shared that every night that we were in your home, we cried ourselves to sleep because of the abuse that you did to us. Don't give me that look. You know it was true. For Mikel, for Gloria Reyes, I saw the bruises that you put on her body. When she told me her story, I knew she was telling the truth, because I experienced that too. Charles Miyazee, the next time you put your hands on another woman, I hope you go to jail.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Linda Ketchum of District 3, to be followed by Noah Lieberman, to be followed by Allison Duggan. Linda?
Thank you. I'm Linda Ketchum. I'm a Madison resident, and I'm here tonight to express my support for this resolution of censure. My grandfather abused my grandma and his children, including my mom. It took my mom nearly 50 years to share her truth. From 1981 until 1983, I volunteered as a safe home for women fleeing domestic violence. In our community, there was no shelter, so through the YWCA, a group of women offered our homes a safe place for women fleeing. If I close my eyes, I can still see some of the women, the bruises, the cuts, the broken bones, the fear and terror and hopelessness in their eyes. Some of them shared that their ministers had encouraged them to stay with their partners or dismiss the abuse altogether. The stories of those women shook my faith, and I can only imagine what it did to theirs. For too long, our institutions, including churches and government bodies, have avoided discussing, whenever possible, the subject of intimate partner violence. Here tonight, this council has the opportunity to address domestic violence by implementing consequences for that behavior. We need to call out the myths that the allegations are a woman scorned, are politically motivated, that no one is perfect and people can change. While it is true that people can change, that doesn't mean that we don't hold the perpetrators of the abuse accountable for their actions. It also means that when, over the course of 22 years, there is a continued pattern of abuse toward women, that hoped-for change in the individual's behavior has not occurred. Domestic violence is about power and control. We should ask, why doesn't he stop abusing her? Not, why did she come forward now? Attempts to dismiss the experiences of the women who have been abused as politically motivated, suggesting that by sharing their truths, they are diminishing the real survivors of abuse, is offensive. The physical healing from abuse happens far more quickly than the emotional and spiritual healing process. We must educate ourselves on trauma and understand that survivors have the right to come forward with their stories and their truths on their own timeline. Our institutions must hear, believe, and affirm to survivors of abuse that the abuse was not their fault, and certainly not anything condoned by elected officials. It's critical that our institutions talk about domestic violence. Calling out the reality of it is a necessary step in creating pathways to safety for women who are being abused. It's necessary to call it out for what it is, a violation of humanity, morality, ethics, community standards, and the law, because doing so can offer victims hope and strength and a vision for new life. We have to call it out because, in keeping silent and ignoring the human cost and spiritual degradation of violence against women, we fail the people we are called to represent and serve. We must call it out because survivors need to hear us call it out, name it, and condemn it. You have the opportunity tonight to call it out, to condemn the behavior, the abuse, and to let survivors, women and men, know that they're not alone.
That's your time.
We believe them, and we will not be complicit.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Noah Lieberman of District 14, to be followed by Allison Duggan, to be followed by James Greer. Noah?
Thank you. I want to say first and foremost, thank you to the women who have come forward here for their bravery and strength. I can't imagine what it takes to speak up on a matter like this, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and it does not go unappreciated, so thank you. This is, I have seen some disturbing things about this resolution to censure, about the politics of it, and I just want to say that this should not be a matter of politics. This is a matter of right and wrong. This is a matter of the example we set for those in our community, for the type of body and the type of city we want Madison to be. I would encourage those who are on the fence about this censure to think about the precedent we are setting and that we want to set for how this body will conduct itself and how we will deal with this sort of behavior going forward. Alder Miyazee is not running for reelection. There is not a political impact to this vote, but there is a huge ethical one, and I would encourage anybody who is on the fence to consider that in their vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Allison Duggan of District 15, to be followed by James Greer, to be followed by Shannon Berry. Allison?
Allison Duggan. I use she/her pronouns. I work for Public Health Madison, Dane County, and today I'm here representing myself. I'm also here representing the way that my body feels as a City of Madison employee, and that's what I want to share with you today. Like many naive progressives, I was shocked and sad the day after our last presidential election, but those weren't the first nor the most present feelings in my body. It was a sinking realization about the reality of experiencing sexual assault, or readily anything in the behavior that is excused in the "boys will be boys" category. We had elected a president that said it was not only acceptable but encouraged to grab women by their genitals, to sexually assault them, even when they didn't consent to it. Wasn't surprising. We knew it and believed this was true. The vote affirmed that you can sexually assault people, and we don't think that makes you disqualified from holding power over others in government office, not even the presidency of the United States. This landed in my body as a reminder of my own vulnerability. As I read the news and statements and reports, I was struck by the similarity of response in my body. As a City of Madison employee, I can remember attending my first 3-5 training as a brand-new, shiny, young city person, employee, and the safety I had around the culture, the place that I worked. I'm here today to encourage censorship, not because I believe the allegations are true, which I do, but because it's not enough to say, I believe you. I recently heard an interview with Dr. Bessie Ford on the anniversary of her testimony in the confirmation hearings of Brett Kavanaugh. She talked about how during the process, folks would come up to her and say, I believe you, how she was struck by that, that she knew their intention was to be kind and supportive, and that they were trying to convey sympathy, and those were the words they had to say, I believe you. It's what we say because women are so often not believed, but it's also like belief is the most we can offer. I think you have the opportunity to send a clear message and signal that we can do more than offer belief for the women who have stepped forward so bravely, and something which we can do to tell them that the system not only believes them, but thinks that their safety matters. Tonight, I wish I was home with my two-year-old, but I'm here because I hope things are different for her.
Thank you. Our next registrant is James Greer of Cottage Grove, Wisconsin, to be followed by Shannon Berry, to be followed by Jesse Ransom. James?
Thank you. I'm here, I guess I'm protesting the process that the committee used, the mayor used, going public. It seems that the decision has already been made, had already been made, and for her to come out and to go public with that before there was a public hearing, before there was even a vote, that just seems like he's being railroaded, that the fact that the city hired and spent $18,000 on a law, on a firm that came back with no conclusion, which I thought in America, you were innocent until proven guilty, but it seems that this body decided, well, he's guilty, I don't care what the report said, he's guilty, and we're going to punish him. And I don't think that's fair. I'm not saying that I believe that he didn't do this or did do it, it's just the process that was used to go public with names and everything prior to a vote, which would censure him, to say, I wonder why she went public with this? Is that to discourage people from coming out that would support him? Is it that to warn other alders, alders who didn't sign on to the other, four alders who didn't sign on to the, that if you don't join us, if this isn't unanimous, we're coming after you next? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Shannon Berry of District 18, to be followed by Jesse Ransom, to be followed by Dana Pelibon. Shannon?
Thank you, everybody. I'm just here tonight to thank the 14 alders and Mayor Rhodes Conway for sponsoring the censure resolution. As a District 18 resident, I do not feel that Alder Miyazee has ever represented me, but now, considering the serious allegations that numerous women have made about Alder Miyazee, I have absolutely no confidence in him as a leader, nor do I believe that he should hold any position of power or influence. I have worked for more than half of my life in the field of domestic violence. I've worked with literally thousands of victims and survivors, and I have seen firsthand how difficult it is for people to come forward, to share the trauma that they've experienced, and to seek help and justice. I know how rare false reports are, and I've also seen time and time again that those who have caused harm claim that they are somehow the victim, rather than take responsibility for the harm that they've caused. I'm truly grateful to the mayor and to the alders who are sponsoring this resolution for showing the women who have come forward that they are believed, and I really take your point very well. It should be so much more than belief, and that's such a tepid response, and for holding Alder Miyazee to an account through a censure. I think these women are incredibly brave, and they deserve all of our support. I want to also thank you for showing other victims and survivors in Madison who are watching right now that they also deserve to be believed and supported, and they deserve justice. Your leadership is to be commended, and I am truly grateful for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jesse Ransom of Middleton, Wisconsin, to be followed by Dana Pelibon, to be followed by Megan Spielbauer-Sandate. Jesse?
Hey, so I originally came here and I was going to say something else, but then I realized, I actually worked with Gloria Reyes from 2003 on, and she was always missing work. Yeah, we all knew what was going on. But, I mean, what do you do when it's a police officer?
Can you just speak a little closer to the mic?
So, yeah, I mean, it hits a home a little bit harder than I originally thought, but with that being said, so I originally wanted to say, I am asking for this common council to deny this motion, not that it's because this person should be in office, but I believe this is a hollow motion and hurts accountability by creating a false sense of justice. This, this alder was elected by the residents of Madison and has not done anything illegal, according to anybody, correct? So, according to the law, which, where is the police captain? We're talking about women getting hurt. Where is his support right now? So, we should, how are, it just, sorry, the whole Gloria thing kind of screwed me But why are they not investigating any of these false claims of false imprisonments? Like, what's going on? Like, there has to be some other route to solve these issues, instead of making a, making a resolution. Like, we're talking about people actually getting hurt. Like, nobody's really above the law. Like, what's going on? Like, why aren't the police investigating some of these issues? Like, there has to be another route, and that's why I'm saying deny it, because we need something better than just this. We need something for accountability. So, thank you. Also, actually do approve it.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dana Pelibon of Fitchburg, Wisconsin, to be followed by Megan Spielbauer-Sandate, to be followed by Nathan Royco-Maurer. Dana?
My name is Dana Pelibon. I work as the executive director of a victim service organization, but I am here as a private citizen. In 1964, Civil Rights Act established a legal foundation for preventing sexual harassment. '72, Title IX prohibits sex discrimination in federally funded schools. '76, first recognized quid pro quo sexual harassment as a type of gender-based sexual discrimination. '80, EEOC officially established guidelines for sexual harassment in the workplace. '86, Supreme Court determined that severe pervasive sexual harassment violates federal law. '91, Civil Rights Act gave rights to a jury trial in federal court to collect damages. '93, Supreme Court rules that victims don't have to prove physical or psychological injury for it to be defined as sexual harassment. '94, Violence Against Women Act permits evidence of the history of sexual harasser while limiting evidence related to the accuser. '98, Supreme Court rules that employers are liable even if the threats aren't carried out. 2005, Supreme Court rules that it is illegal to punish for reporting. 2021, Ending Forced Arbitration of Sexual Assault and Sexual Harassment Act of '21 offers individuals the opportunity to bring claims to court regardless of prior agreements. 2022, the Speak Out Act limits the enforceability of non-disclosure and non-disparagement clauses. August 9th, 2024. The conclusions as it relates to Alder Miyazee: inappropriate and offensive. Isolating nature of these incidents made multiple people uncomfortable. Actions were unwanted and likely distasteful. And this is just the tip, the tip of the iceberg on the many complaints. And regardless of the fact that the victims were found likely credible, the actions did not rise to the level of legal responsibility. But we know, as evidenced by history, that legal responsibility sometimes is not up to date with harm by perpetrators. This is where actions like censures come in. It is reasonable that an alder is censured for unreasonable conduct displayed repeatedly to multiple people. They all can't be lying. This isn't Game of Thrones. He ain't that important, y'all. Instead, you have community members and a colleague- Instead, you have community members and a colleague asking you to stand up and say that this particular behavior, as investigated, was inappropriate, because it was. It was inappropriate, and it was pervasive. And to use our collective trauma of racial harm in the form of lynching to distract from harmful behavior is disgusting and unacceptable. I again urge you to be who you actually say you are. My God, for one more time, be who you say you are, and vote in favor of this censure.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Megan Spielbauer-Sandate of District 15, to be followed by Nathan Royko Mauer, to be followed by Amanda Hall. Megan?
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan, and I'm here to speak my support for the call to censure Alder Miyazie. This is, City Council has an obligation to recognize the statements made by folks in our community about the alder's abuse and violence towards them. I can't believe I have to say it, but it's not okay for someone to sexually harass and abuse people in our community. Different individuals who have known the alder in both professional and personal environments have come forward to state the way that they have been abused and harassed by him. To not vote to censure them tonight is to tell all of those people that you don't really believe them, that you don't really believe survivors. If you vote no today, you may be able to tell yourself that you believe them, but you're quote-unquote obligated to the investigation process and its results, or whatever other excuse you make for yourself. However, you have the chance to act here today, and I hope that you do. I want to add, frankly, I find it atrocious that there are people, including the accused alder, who disregard this item because the city did an investigation, and also implying that the city wasted money on it. This city puts millions of dollars into the police department to quote-unquote "respond to crime after it happened," citing a main reason we need police is violence against women. To say it's not a good use of money to investigate an official who has had a series of complaints made against them is completely asinine. Additionally, women and gender queer folks have had to respond to abuse, harassment, and marginalization with professionalism for years. It should not be something that is then used against them for why they can continue to endure it. Our justice system and society continually fails survivors of abuse. What does it say to other survivors in our city and our county that a known abuser sits on this council and makes decisions on behalf of our community? Please vote today to censure Alder Miyazie. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Nathan Royko Mauer of Reno, Wisconsin, to be followed by Amanda Hall, to be followed by Tara. Nathan?
My name is Nathan Royko Mauer, and while I don't live in Madison, I've grown up in Madison my whole life. My folks still live in Madison, so I come from a little bit farther away to speak to you all today. Our society protects abusive men. We see it repeated again and again at every level of government and literally anywhere else you care to look. Partner violence is perpetrated against women by men in the vast majority of cases, and so I am speaking to you with a heavy heart and a profound sense of urgency regarding the recent and deeply troubling allegations against Madison alder Charles Miyazie. Alder Miyazie has been accused multiple times over many years by many independent victims of sexually harassing women, and most recently, we have learned of a horrifying series of incidents in which he physically abused his one-time partner and former member of the Madison Common Council Gloria Reyes, a respected deputy mayor, former law enforcement professional, and school board president. One incident where Gloria was beaten unconscious is not only a personal tragedy, but a stark reminder of the pervasive issues of violence against women even within our own government. As elected officials, you have a solemn duty to uphold the principles of justice, integrity, and respect for all individuals. The allegations against Alder Miyazie are not just a series of isolated incidents. They represent a pattern of behavior that is utterly incompatible with the values he has sworn to protect. Sexual harassment and physical abuse are grave violations of human rights and dignity, and they have no place in our society, let alone within the ranks of our elected representatives. The women of Madison, and indeed all citizens, deserve to feel safe and free from threats of violence, especially when they are carrying out their duties as public servants. Gloria's position as a deputy mayor and her extensive contributions to our community make this incident all the more egregious. It is a stark reminder that power and influence do not shield one from the horrors of domestic violence, and that we must be vigilant in protecting all members of our community regardless of their status or position. Censoring Alder Miyazie is not just a necessary step, it is a moral imperative. It sends a clear message that the Madison Common Council will not tolerate any form of abuse or harassment. It affirms our commitment to creating a safe and respectful environment for all where everyone can perform their duties without fear of violence or intimidation. This action will also serve as a powerful statement of support for the victims of Alder Miyazie's actions, acknowledging their pain and suffering and standing in solidarity with them. Furthermore, taking decisive action against Alder Miyazie will help restore public trust in our government. The citizens of Madison look to you for leadership and expect you to act with integrity and courage. By censuring Alder Miyazie, you demonstrate that you are willing to hold your own accountable, and that you are committed to upholding the highest standards of conduct. In conclusion, I urge you to act swiftly and decisively in censuring Alder Miyazie. Let us stand together in condemning his actions and reaffirming our commitment to justice, equity, and the safety of all of our citizens. The women of Madison, and indeed all members of our community, deserve nothing less. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amanda Hall of District 19, to be followed by Tara, to be followed by Maxwell Lobenstein. Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Amanda Hall from District 19, and for two terms, I had the distinct privilege to sit where you all are sitting as the representative for District 3. And it is as a woman and as a former alder that I'm here to amplify Alder Bennett. It's, I almost can't, I almost can't say enough how much courage it must take to speak up about something that happens to one that is so personal and so violating and so painful. I don't imagine that Alder Bennett or any of the other women who have come forward will ever go a day without thinking about what happens to them. They have taken tremendous courage to step up and speak and tell us about their experiences, and we owe them a debt of gratitude for that. I'm mostly here to amplify Alder Bennett. I want to pass her the mic in every meaningful way that I can. I believe everything that she has to say and everything that she has courageously shared with all of us. Much has been made about due process. You know, I think that that is a term that we're all familiar with, and as a civil rights attorney, due process is actually something that I do quite a bit with. So, I can tell you that this is not that. When we say in response to the stories that our sisters and our mothers tell us, "Oh, but wait, due process, due process, wait," we use it as a period. We use it to shut down conversations that we need to have, and we use it to allow people to avoid accountability. We cannot hide behind these ideas that don't even apply here. We cannot continue as a society, certainly as a community, to hide behind and use these concepts as a way to erase and shut down the experiences, the lived experiences of our sisters and of our mothers. So, in conclusion, I agree with the other speakers who have said, "I wish I could give more than 'I believe you.'" I believe Alder Bennett, so I demand that this body take appropriate action and vote in favor of censure.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tara of District 15, to be followed by Maxwell Lobenstein, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe. Tara?
Yep, okay. I'm speaking tonight not just as a friend and someone who loves Juliana, or as someone who has spoke with the other survivors and believes them wholeheartedly. I'm speaking as a survivor of intimate partner violence. I will not go into detail with what happened to me, partially because it should not take another person's recollection of the violence committed against them to convince anyone to believe survivors the first time, but mostly because we as survivors do not owe the city, or anyone for that matter, endless recounts of what happened to us in order to get you to care or to do something about it. I, like many others in my same situation, spent too long trying to convince my abusers that what they were doing was wrong, and I will never waste another breath trying to convince anyone what I know to be a truth. I know what happened to me, and those who abused me know what they did, in the same way that those in this room know what they did. What I will say is that situations like this are what make it impossible and what makes survivors unwilling to speak out about what has happened to us. It is one thing to be able to admit to ourselves what is happening, to label the way that someone is treating us as abuse, to work through the gaslighting we commit against ourselves that is filled with, "They didn't mean it, they didn't know, they're such a nice person to everyone else, it was all my fault, I allowed it," et cetera, et cetera. It is an entirely different beast to be able to say out loud to others because we all know what awaits us, the discrediting, the demands for proof, the attack on our own character often led by our abusers, and so on and so forth. I, like Juliana and the other survivors, have already suffered enough at the hands of our abusers. How dare you ask us to relive what we experienced over and over to get you to support us, to believe us, to stand with us? I am in awe of the bravery of those who have spoken openly and honestly about the abuse they experienced at the hands of Charles Miyazie. I'm equally in awe of the strength of those who are still grappling with what he did to them behind closed doors, but I want to ask the city and other alders this: How many of us have to come forward with the same stories about the same abusers for us to be believed? Why does it take more than one of us with the same story for even, for you to even consider someone could be an abuser, but only one person to convince you that they are not? It's appalling, and the reason why abusers feel so consistently emboldened in their actions. I may never get the opportunity to address my abusers directly, but I will look to the accused in the eyes right now and say the same thing that I am sure every other person who has ever been abused would say with the same seething anger and disdain I would look at them, those who hurt me, and say this: "You are a coward." But you already know that. It is not a brave person who lays hands on another. It is not a courageous person who uses fear and intimidation to get what they want. The revolution starts at home, and it's laughable to believe that you could lead this community to what it needs to be if you cannot enact those values in your personal life. You are a coward.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Maxwell Lobenstein of District 4, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe. Maxwell?
Hi, I'm Maxwell Lobenstein. It's been a little while since I've spoke here, but I'm here to say the exact same thing. Not all scars are visible. The harm and fear caused by Charles Miyazie has been visible throughout this night, as various victims have had to step forward, look their abusers in the eye, and say, "If this harm is real." These are steps that should never have needed to be taken for accountability to occur. Charles Miyazie is here as a representative of his community. I refuse to believe that this pattern of abuse is something that had his community been aware of, they would have voted for and supported. That this pattern of abuse of power, of abuse of position, is something that is becoming of any representative here, and to avoid censure or to avoid accountability now when we have the opportunity to do so, is to show that this council is tolerant of this ethos, this ethic of sustained violence against women, of intimidation with his seat, of misrepresentation of his community. Charles Miyazie, people should not be afraid to sit alone with you. No representative can properly account for their, or hold representation of their community when people do not feel comfortable coming to you. Already, we have seen this fear. Already, people will leave here tonight, knowing your reputation, knowing your character. You have done nothing to take accountability for your action. You have the opportunity today to vote and support this censure. Each and every one of you, avoid this tolerance of abuse and intimidation of positions and representation on this council. And Charles Miyazie, if while your character is on display for everybody, if while you have the opportunity to take accountability for what you have done, give your, give your district the opportunity for better representation and resign. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll try it one more time for Amelia Royko Mar of Reno, Wisconsin. Do we have Amelia?
Mayor, I don't see Amelia online.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, I want to acknowledge that for many people, some of the--
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, there was a couple late registrants, and I believe Bonnie Rowe is registered.
Yes, sorry. Thank you for catching that. Then our last registrant to speak, if Amelia is not with us, is Bonnie Rowe of District 11.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Common Council. I believe it was Noah Lieberman who said, "Is this a precedent we want to set?" And my opinion is, I don't think it is. I don't think the council floor is the place for due process. I don't think Alder Miyazie should pay the price for another woman's abuse story, for the words or actions of a president, or all the abuses of the past or fears of abuse in the future. I don't think he needs to be the precedent for that, for accusations repeated loudly but without proof or any form of due process. I would have to agree with James Greer. I speak out in protest of the process that was chosen. I do believe we have to have a precedent, keep the precedent that people are innocent until proven guilty. This censure is about Alder Miyazie's conduct in office, the investigation that you approved, and spent $18,000 of staff payer money. And to the woman that hinted that some think the investigation wasn't worth the money, I disagree. The problem with it I have is that this censure was drafted after the investigation was complete, the investigation that cleared him of any violation of the IP, APM. There was deemed to have been no abuse or harassment in this case, and that is what is before you tonight. I'll just say that Alder Miyazie, on a few occasions, invited me to social occasions because he was afraid he was being entrapped in different situations. He was nervous to be in the presence of other people for the accusations that were coming out. I don't think it's fair to have due process on the council floor. And for the one who said, "Why aren't the police investigating this?" Because charges have not been filed, a case has not been made before law enforcement. And when one of the accusers went before the, a judge in Dane County Court to get a restraining order, that was dismissed. They had not had contact in 14 years. So, I think it's important to take facts that we can actually look at and know, and if there are other facts, they need to come out in a court of law with due process. And I don't think a precedent should be set here for censoring, or probably later, trying to remove an alder from office. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Once again, I'll ask people to refrain from expressions of support or disapproval from the galleries. That is our last registrant wishing to speak on this item. You have a point of process?
I have a point of order. You have admonished three times, reminding the persons in the gallery to refrain themselves and conduct themselves accordingly. If it happens again, I request that they be removed.
Thank you, Alder Hank to McKinney. Before we proceed, I want to acknowledge that some of the testimony may have been difficult for people to hear tonight, and so I'd like to offer the following resources. If you need mental health support, please call or text 988. You're not alone, and some of the conversation tonight may have been triggering for folks, so I would really encourage folks within the sound of my voice to take advantage of that resource. If you are experiencing sexual violence or intimate partner violence, there are a number of resources available for you in our community. The RCC helpline is 608-251-7273, and Espanol, 608-258-2567. The day's text line is 608-420-4638, and the Unidos Lineare is 1-800-510-9195. Of course, if you are in physical danger, please call 911. Again, the mental health line is 988. It takes calls or texts. Before we go to questions, I would like to ask alders to exercise excellent judgment in whether it is necessary to ask a question of any of the registrants tonight. Personally, I'm not sure there is any reason that any of us would need to ask any questions of any of the registrants tonight. That is, of course, your prerogative to do so, but I again would ask you to exercise excellent judgment and restraint in doing so. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to ask for more time if needed, because I wanted to finish hearing. For two speakers, Linda-- speakers, Linda Ketchum and James Bennett.
Alder Madison, we'll move an additional minute for two speakers as named. Is there objection? Seeing no objection, then Linda Ketchum, would you like another minute?
I was finished, actually.
She says she was finished. Mr. Bennett, would you like an extra minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I really want to put to rest this argument that Charles is totally exonerated. He is not. The city put this matter into a third party's hands. At this time, they weighed the evidence at the city level, state level, and federal level. And when that happens, all laws come into play. There is a law that reversed these decisions, and it's under Title VII. It was a case of Sheen versus Chan, 189th Federal Third District, 529 of the Seventh District Court, 1999. The Seventh District Court reversed the summary judgment, basically to say that anything that's severe enough to potentially create a hostile environment, these cases illustrate that even isolated incidents is sufficient and severe and can be actionable under Title VII. It may-- APM 3-5 is here at the city level.
That's an additional minute.
Just five seconds, 10 seconds more. I tend on taking this to federal court in a class action suit against you, with Reyes, with other members, with my daughter, and anyone else who wants to join. There's going to be named defendants on this, there's going to be named complainants on this, so don't sit and think that it's all over. It's not. And the last thing I want to say is, is that I really don't care if we censor you or not. I hope they don't censor you, and I hope you stay right there, because it makes my job a little bit easier to serve you papers.
Thank you. I don't have any other Alders in the queue, and that is the end of public comment. It is... All right, so then we will move on. Alder Latimer Burris?
Can we take a five-minute break?
Moved and seconded for a five-minute break. Is there any objection? Seeing none, let's say we come back at 8:55, and we'll stand adjourned until then. All right. Thank you all for your patience and for your quick action and support of Alder Bennett and her family. I will call the meeting back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Viver?
Here.
Alder Viver is present. Alder Weheli? Alder Bennett is excused. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Conklin is present. Alder Curry? Alder Curry is present. Alder Duncan?
Yes.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Field?
Here.
Alder Field is present. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Alder Figueroa Cole is present. Alder Govendorajin? Alder Govendorajin is present. Alder Uguere?
Present.
Alder Uguere is present. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Knox?
Present.
Alder Knox is present. Alder Latimer Burris?
Present.
Alder Latimer Burris is present. Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Madison is present. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is present. Alder Miazzi? Alder Miazzi is present. Alder Revere?
Here.
Alder Revere is present. Alder Weheli?
Here.
Alder Weheli is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. All right, so our first item, then, is Item 6, and as Items 6 and 76 are related, unless there's objection, we'll take the two of them together. Seeing no objection, we'll take the two of them together. So on Items 6 and 76, Alder Figueroa Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt Items 6 and 76. Believe there is a request for staff to provide a brief overview of the items, so I don't know if that's you, Director Tuttle?
I can start. Good evening, Megan Tuttle, the Planning Division Director. Also online tonight, we have Tim Parks, who is a planner in our office and is the project manager for the Hill Valley project. I know we also have some folks from the Transportation Engineering Division who can help us answer any questions. The project that's in front of you tonight is a two-part project. The first part, as the mayor indicated, is the request to rezone the property associated with this preliminary plat. There are several rezoning requests that are associated with that. Of the recommendations that you received from the Plan Commission, a number of those are recommended for approval, and one of those is recommended to be placed on file because of its inconsistency with the neighborhood development plan. The majority of the comments that you've been hearing this evening relate to the preliminary plat for Hill Valley. As the speakers indicated, this is a preliminary plat, which essentially amounts to the approval of a concept plan for the development of this new neighborhood. This preliminary plat has been reviewed for its conformity with our comprehensive plan and with the neighborhood development plan for this area, as well as with other subarea and transportation plans, the city's official map, and other rules and regulations. The preliminary plat is a timely issue in front of the council this evening. Under statute, the city is required to approve, conditionally approve, or deny a preliminary plat within 90 days of its receipt. This plat was received September 23 of this year, and therefore, our deadline for action is December 23, just in a couple of weeks. The prelim-- excuse me, the preliminary plat, as you've heard, is a prerequisite to applicants coming forward with a request for a final plat approval. In this case, it's our understanding that the intention is that that final plat approval may happen in stages rather than at once, and is a tool to help us, together with the rezoning, advance the neighborhood development plans, future land use recommendations, transportation network, and other public infrastructure improvements. The preliminary plat, with all of the conditions that were included in the lengthy staff report, and with the recommended street configuration for High Point Road from the Transportation Commission discussion, were recommended for approval by the Plan Commission for you this evening. I will leave it at that as a brief summary, and happy to answer specific questions that Alders may have, and again, will invite, at any point, Tim Parks to join me in answering those questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on Items 6 and 76? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you. My question is for Tim Parks. Tim, could you summarize what the meeting this morning, or early at 1:30, and we walked away with?
Sure, Alder, I'll try. Alder Harrington McKinney joined Traffic Engineering Director Yang Tao, Sean Loy, Luke Peters, and myself, meeting with a representative of the High Point Estates Homeowners Association, where the gentleman's name was Craig, I apologize, I don't recall his last name, that shared some concerns that folks in High Point Estates raised regarding traffic-related impacts. They felt they experienced now on High Point Road, Walton Drive in particular, which lines up with N Street, which is the east-west community connector that will extend from the southwest corner of Hill Valley to the intersection of High Point and Walton Drive. We discussed some of the monitoring that Traffic Engineering staff at the meeting indicated that they will do, sort of setting a baseline for existing conditions pre-Hill Valley along New Washburn Way and Walton Drive, so that we could understand any potential impacts that may occur east of High Point Road in the High Point Estates neighborhood. We also talked a little bit about the interface between land use planning and planning for the transportation infrastructure to serve an area. In this case, the plan that we are primarily looking at for the Hill Valley development is the 2017 High Point Raymond Neighborhood Development Plan, which was actually an amendment of a neighborhood development plan that we did for the area, the city roughly bounded by Valley View Road at the north, Pleasantview Road on the west, McKee Road on the south, and Elver Park on the east. Back in 1997, was amended in 2017 to basically update the land use recommendations and infrastructure recommendations for that area. One of the focus areas in that 2017 Plan Amendment was the Mullins family properties that are proposed to become the Hill Valley development. So we talked about how we felt that the transportation infrastructure recommended in the neighborhood development plan was sufficient, more than sufficient frankly, to serve the proposed land uses, in this case, for Hill Valley. The council heard earlier during public comment about concerns about consistency with the plan. Staff has noted in the December 2 staff report that we feel that the project is generally consistent with the recommendations in the neighborhood development plan. And I can stop there, and Alder, if there was more that you needed for me to fill in, I'm happy to provide any additional information you need.
One final, his name was Craig Thomas. That was the resident that was present. Do you recall his statement when he finally left that meeting? If you can share that or summarize it, you don't have to be verbatim, but what did he walk away with? What was your impression?
I would characterize, and I really want to emphasize characterize, that Mr. Thomas was, walked away with more information about the interface between planning and development, how, you know, things are reviewed, projects like Hill Valley are reviewed by city agencies, and had a better understanding of how that works than he feels he had, or some of his neighbors had during and following the December 2 Plan Commission meeting.
Thank you very much. That was sufficient. And so, follow-up, Madam Mayor, the reason that this was very important is that I don't know if it's in order now to give commendations to staff, but we--
It would be more in order when we enter discussion, Alder.
Okay, and then you'll call me back in.
I will. Thank you, Alder. Alder Duncan, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for Megan or Tim. One of the concerns I know that was addressed in some of the emails that we had been receiving was around the housing mix four that's going to be on the west side. Well, the proposed housing mix four that is going to be on the west side of South High Point at Walton Drive, and I was just wanting to get clarification. In the 2017 High Point Raymond Neighborhood Development Plan adopted, does it recommend housing mix four on that area? And if it does, is the zoning that Veridian is requesting consistent with that recommendation?
Yes, the housing mix that is identified for that location in the 2017 Neighborhood Development Plan does indicate housing mix four. It also indicates a mix of housing mix three and two as it transitions away from that intersection along South High Point Road. I believe Tim is pulling that up on the screen right now. So the area that we're talking about as housing mix four is in the darkest brown color in the area that he's circling with his cursor, and then housing mix three just to the south of it, and two as we move to the west and south. And that is, was an item in the Neighborhood Development Plan that was amended in 2017 from earlier versions of that plan. The zoning that is requested for this portion of the plat is consistent with that housing mix, with a medium residential housing mix.
Thank you, and I just have one follow-up question. I wasn't able to attend the meeting this morning, but I just wanted to get clarification from the discussion that was there during that meeting, if it was understood really what this preliminary plat is, and the fact that, as we continue to move forward to that final plat that was discussed earlier by the developers, that things could change. And so, we don't really currently have a solid answer for residents around the traffic concerns that are being addressed, but conversations will still be able to be had as we move forward, and at some point, we will be able to provide definitive answers of what that South High Point would potentially look like.
I think that's a question for you, Tim.
Okay. I also see that Yang Tao has raised his hand, so I'll take a start at it, and then maybe Yang can backfill anything I missed. The preliminary plat that's before you tonight is the concept plan that future final plats will need to be substantially in conformance with. And so, the final plat is the instrument that actually creates the lots and dedicates the streets, and does all of the things that you see attached to Agenda Item 76. The preliminary plat is the concept plan, if you will, that informs decisions on final plats. The major questions about whether a proposed subdivision is consistent with adopted plans, city ordinances, the official map, et cetera, happens now with the preliminary plat. And if a final plat or final plats are submitted that are consistent with the preliminary plat, then they are entitled to approval under state statute. So there is a fairly significant onus on getting the preliminary plat correct, bearing in mind that the staff report, as reviewed by roughly a dozen city agencies, including planning and others, have determined that the proposal before you is generally consistent with the High Point Raymond Neighborhood Development Plan and the comprehensive plan. We have identified in the staff report a series of refinements, some large, some small, to the proposed Hill Valley development that will need fine-tuning in the form of a revised preliminary plat, and Veridian is aware of that requirement and is preparing to submit that to you. It's not an opportunity to reconsider everything that's before the council tonight, or that was before the Plan Commission last Monday night, but basically to take the document that's before you tonight and fine-tune it a little bit more to better reflect recommendations and plans, ordinance requirements, fine-tuning that has been identified by city agencies, and all that's enumerated in the staff report. So the next items that the Common Council will see on this project will be a final plat, probably multiple final plats to be submitted in sequence over the course of years. That will come through the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission will determine whether the plat is in substantial conformance, the final plat is in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat of record. And then you'll also see via the Transportation Commission and Board of Public Works, the plans and specifications and the developers' agreement for Veridian to implement the infrastructure needed to serve each of those final plats. And I'll stop there and allow others to join on the answer as well.
Director Tao?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tim. I want to thank Alder Duncan for the great question, and also want to take the opportunity to thank Alder Harrington McKinney for reaching out, and, you know, the neighborhoods for contacting us, you know, sharing their concerns and thoughts. Yeah, I want to say that, you know, it's a big development project. You know, I think, you know, the concerns are valid, and we, you know, we understand that. So staff did take, you know, this very seriously, and we took a systematic look at not only the new street network in the new development, you know, making sure it's, you know, complete green streets compliant, make sure it's, you know, pedestrian-friendly as much as we can, and make sure we're going to design a way that, you know, we're not promote speeding, but, you know, calm down traffic, create more livability, you know, for the bigger neighborhood. For the existing streets, you know, we also put our thoughts into them. So I think that's, you know, Alder Duncan's question comes about. You know, some of the, you know, impacts, you know, we're going to see, for example, South High Point Road, the neighborhood also concerned some of the, you know, collector streets in some existing neighborhoods, you know, such wherever, you know, copyright and speak on Button Drive, and also New Washburn. So we look at, you know, all of those. So for South High Point, we have, actually have the capacity, you know, to handle the traffic. As a matter of fact, we have, you know, more capacity even after these, you know, all the developments are complete. You know, some of the extra capacity actually creates problems right now. You know, the increased speeding when it's over capacity, when the capacity, you know, is bigger than the demand. And some of the design features also are trying to change. So the plan is to, you know, redesign the space allocation on the street, on the corridor, and we're going to strip it differently. We're going to reduce the capacity on South High Point, and we're going to, you know, install a center, two-way center, left turn lens with buffer bike lanes with one traffic lane direction. So we hope that, you know, will slow traffic down a little bit, you know, creates more safety for pedestrians, bicyclists traveling along the road, and also crossing the road. You know, we want to change, we still have capacity to handle the additional traffic. You know, the timing of those though, that we're not going to do it right away, because the most economic time to do those big projects will be along with a resurfacing project. So we're looking at a potential 2028 or 29 project. With the engineering resurfacing the road, we're going to make that change. You know, the development also are happening in phases, so it takes time for them to come online as well. So we felt like, you know, that time is reasonable. So I think, you know, we, you know, we do have a plan, but, you know, it may not happen right away. We also have plans to, you know, looking to introduce new traffic signals along the road, you know, helping folks from the existing development and the new development, you know, to access the neighborhood, and pedestrians cross the street to access amenities, you know, on the other side. So those, you know, will be monitored as well. Those will not be done right away because it does not meet the warrants right away. When you install it, when it does not meet the warrant, it creates more problem than, you know, solving some existing problems. And also, you know, generally speaking, new traffic signal will attract more traffic to the side street, so we don't want to see that happen, you know, unnecessarily. So that's the reason, I think there is plan in place, but it just, you know, takes some time to happen. You know, for the neighborhood streets though, you know, as Tim mentioned, that, you know, that's some of the concerns from the neighborhood, we are going to, you know, monitor the situation very closely. As a matter of fact, we already added both Welton and New Washburn 12 Sixth Streets Madison Program for evaluation for traffic coming. You know, we don't feel like, you know, right now it's going to score very high, but we're going to collect some data to establish a baseline. As a development project happens with Hill Valley, we're going to update the study, and we're going to see whether, you know, how things have changed, and we're going to make improvements with the Six Streets Program when the time comes, if the times comes. There's also possibility, you know, the impact might be, you know, smaller than, you know, people think right now. So, but we'll definitely, you know, keep a close attention to the impact. So, so I do want to give the council the information on what we have been looking at from a transportation infrastructure perspective. So there's definitely, you know, is a plan in place, even though, you know, we're going to flexible ensemble of details depending on how things are going, and those will not happen right away, but it's going to happen. So I'll stop there, and thank you.
Thank you. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So we'll thank staff for that background. Both Items 6 and 76 have been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there discussion? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by introducing why I brought this before council. From the volume of form emails that have been generated from High Point Estates residents, where can we progress from here? There is obviously a strong sense that residents feel unheard. As Alder of District 20, I must address this. And I put that on the record because there was a direct response by staff to address the questions that residents still had. I want to make sure that I say thank you for Alder Duncan, because this project really is in District 1, and I also understand and respect Veridian, so I want to make sure that I make that statement. But what we often do is when residents have questions, we fast track it, and we don't stop to hear what their concerns are. It did not change the Transportation Commission full support. It did not change the Planning Committee full report. But staff paused and came into an hour meeting with residents to answer their questions. That was perfect. So we talk about community engagement, and so this was an example of the staff. It was someone from the Director of Transportation, a traffic, it was traffic engineer, it was planning, and it was another individual from traffic. And they took the time to answer the questions that residents had. And so, the resident walked away and said, "It might not be what I wanted to hear, but I have a better understanding of the process." And that's exactly what we should be looking at. We're not, it wasn't my idea to stop, you know, the forward moving. I understood exactly what was before the council at the time, but there is no way that I could have omitted the question that the residents kept saying is that we do not feel heard. And so, after the effort that the staff did today, they cannot walk away and say that they did not feel heard. He might not agree, but this is a long-term process, and that's what they don't understand. It's not going to happen overnight. It's a long-term process. And when traffic engineer is saying that we will have a baseline, we'll continue to process this, we'll continue to look at it, they walked away with saying, "I was heard." And so, I just wanted to lift up this as we work, because that's what we are elected to, is to hear our constituents, bring it back before committee, and even if we don't, if they don't get what they're asking for, they understand the why. And so, I wanted to publicly thank the Alder, you know, for allowing me into his space, because as I said, this is a District 1 project, and I want to commend the staff for what they did, willing to step up immediately, and Veridian for opening the door. And I'm looking forward to a process that works well for all. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. So Items 6 and 76 have been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of both items. And that will take us to Item 10. Item 10 is Legistar 85803, a new license for Izakaya Shinya doing business as Izakaya Kuruyama at 419 State Street. President Figaro, call a motion, please.
Move to-
Grant with-
Grant.
Move to grant with conditions?
With conditions, thank you.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. On Item 10, are there questions for staff? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing none on Item 10, which has been moved and seconded to grant with conditions, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 10. And then, considering the similar content, is there any objection to postponing Item 22 and taking it up with Item 92? Seeing no objection, we'll do that. I'm sorry, Alder Latimer-Burris?
I would like to go ahead and take 22 up, please.
All right. Then Item 22 is Legistar 86370, report of the mayor submitting Alder committee appointments. On Item 22, President Figaro, call.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. On Item 22, are there questions for staff? Alder Latimer-Burris?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we have staff from the Department of Civil Rights?
Director Davis is here. Go ahead, Alder.
Yes, thank you, Director Davis. I really appreciate it. I wanted to ask you about APM 3-point, or 3-5. I know I just took a seminar on harassment, and I wanted to talk about, I wanted to ask about what is mandatory when we think somebody is being harassed or someone's creating a hostile work environment? When do we need to report that? What are the federal laws as far as the immediacy of our reporting? And if you also could touch on, for the council, what is consideration?
Alder, I don't believe those questions are relevant to Alder-matic committee appointments.
The relevancy, Mayor, is, has to do with the other issue of harassment. This Alder-matic committee appointments were made in conjunction with the harassment. So-
Alder, you're making some very deep assumptions about my motivations.
Okay, would you explain your motivations then?
These appointments, Alder-matic appointments are my appointments to make, and the council has two options. You can confirm them, or you can refer them back to my office. And I'm not obliged to explain why I appoint Alders to various committees. If you'd like to ask questions about the APMs or the laws in respect to Item 92, you're free to do that.
I would like to know the process for, you have the right to appoint, no doubt, and then I would like to know the process that you have or the right that you have, and maybe Attorney Haas can add into this, to remove someone from a committee and appoint somebody else.
The attorney can speak to it, but Alder, I can tell you again, the council has two options. You can confirm my appointments, or you can refer them back to my office.
Okay, I would like the attorney to talk to us about the process of the mayor removing somebody and reappointing somebody.
Attorney Haas?
Alder, this item is for the appointments, not for the removal.
Of course.
Under state statute-
Removal from the committee, because to appoint somebody else, you have to remove somebody from a committee?
No. The statutes allow for removal of a city officer, including committee members, in two different ways. One is by the council for cause, which requires a hearing and a finding that there's cause, and the council takes a vote. The second is the mayor's authority, as it's described in the statutes, is the mayor has authority to remove at pleasure, meaning for any reason or for no reason. It's the mayor's authority to remove city officers, and we've concluded that that applies to members of city committees. And so, that has been done. The mayor has ordered the removal of the Alder from city committees. This item is for the appointments, and as mayors indicated, it's solely, as any other appointment that you routinely do, the council has the option to either remove or refer them back to the mayor's office.
So Attorney Haas, just for clarification, you're saying at any point, the mayor can just wake up tomorrow and decide to switch everybody on finance committee or any other committee? Is that what you're saying?
That's what the statutes provide, yes.
Which was news to me, honestly. Good to know.
Does the mayor have to state why?
No. That, as I said, the statutes say at pleasure, meaning it's the mayor's prerogative, with or without a reason.
Okay. Thank you. I'll wait for discussion.
Alder Harrington McKinney, questions?
Yeah, Attorney Haas, I think you cited, is it MGO 12? Oh, 1712, is it? About city-
Statute.
Yeah, the statute 1712. Statutes talks about city officials. With city officials and Alders, there's a difference between Alders and city officials. Mike, can you clarify the difference for me?
I'm not trying to understand the questions. Alders are certainly city officials, they're elected officials. In the context of 17.12, it talks about removal of the city officers, which could be, you know, officers of executive branch agencies or officers of committees. So in that context, Alders are not only officials, they're local elected officials, but they are also officers of a body, officers of that committee. And in that context, we concluded that the mayor had the authority to remove officers from committees.
Okay.
Without council action.
Okay, because I can understand, though, city officials being appointed by the mayor, but Alders are elected by the people.
To their office as Alder, they are appointed to committees by the mayor.
But removing them, because she can remove city officials, but that's a-
City officers.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, questions?
Yes, Attorney Haas, so I just had a question. So in this case- So in this case, the process of appointing alders to the committee by a mayor, does that automatically remove committee members on that commission?
The mayor has issued a directive that Alder Miyazze is removed from most committees effective tomorrow. So that will happen regardless of whether or not these committee appointments are approved.
Okay, so are those two actions?
They're separate actions. One is, the first is simply by the mayor, the second is by the mayor and the council to act on the appointments.
Okay. So we can only have some action on the appointments, but not on the removal?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there additional questions? Seeing none. Then Item 22 has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Alder Latimer-Burris.
Yeah, so, I'm not going to support this. I don't like this process whatsoever. And what I'm worried about is that it forecloses and impacts actions that those who are victimized, those who came to the city in 2022, 2023, 2024, and said, "What was going on?" I'm worried about it foreclosing that. So I'm worried about, under federal law that says we must take action on things as soon as we knew about them, and it seems like not only us alders knew a lot, but so did everybody else. So that's one of the things that I'm concerned about. And without talking about the merits, I have to, I'm going to abstain from this, and obviously I've recused myself, and it's not because I don't believe my friend Gloria Reyes. I don't, it's not that I don't support my friend Gloria Reyes, it's not that I haven't heard my friend Gloria Reyes, and it's not that I haven't, that I'm not going to say the same thing that I said over and over and over and over again. Especially as a black woman, with due process, it's like dear to me. And if you ask me what I thought about it, I will say, what's the outcome that I wanted? I would say that I want full due process, even those that mock it or make it like it's I want full due process, which means that we should have a full judicial hearing, that we can get unfiltered, unfettered facts, and not have to subject victims to going to the media for years and to beg, to beg, to beg, to beg. While we sit at the city...
Alder, I think you're perilously close to speaking about an item that you've recused yourself on.
Yeah, so I'm speaking about these items collectively.
So Alder, you've recused yourself on Item 92...
Yeah.
...which means that you can't speak to it. So you can speak to Item 22 at this point in time, which is solely the appointments of five alders.
22 connected to whatever item number the other item is. I'm dismayed, especially as black and brown women, that we're supposed to be protected and we're so concerned. I'm concerned about the fact that we're taking these post-action, immediate actions, and it seems like what I would call a C-Y-A. And I want to make sure that they're not foreclosed. I don't want to stand in front of a room and do a press conference when I've known since 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, that this has been going on. Not me. When I got the message, I called immediately and sent it. I believe it's the reason that this investigated started, because I sent it directly to the common council office. I didn't wait, I didn't see if it was politically correct, I didn't do any of those things. I take this so seriously as a rape survivor, where the community supported a biased process that had to do with race, that had to do with all these different things. And what I wanted most at the end of that process, being an eight-year-old now growing up to be a 55-year-old, is I wanted the due process to happen, so 50 other women didn't have to get raped.
Alder, again, I'm not sure what your comments have to do with Item 22.
And let me finish, and then you can remand me or reprimand me. And I also want to make sure that we never step away from due process, we never politicize anything. When we hear it, we are mandatory reporters, and I'm wondering if we did that. So I'll, I know that's off-topic. I know that's off-topic. I don't want the city to be excused with this, as we've gone over this over and over again. We went in 2022, I understand. My colleague wrote a proposal that would be, Nasra wrote a proposal to deal with the hostile work environment.
Alder, now you're really off-topic.
Yeah, the hostile work environment, harassment.
Alder, I'm sorry, you're out of order, Alder Latimer-Burris.
Because this is totally out of order.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, on the question of appointments?
On the question of appointments, that's Item Number 2286370. And I am not going to support the report of the mayor submitting alder committee appointments. I'm not supporting it because it sets a precedent that is concerning when I hear that we are at will, and the mayor has the right to remove individuals from, I guess, boards, committees, or commissions at will. And I think that this sets a precedent. And I went to look at what due process is. Due process is a legal requirement, and I bring it up because that was in the discussion. So it's valid and following up on something that has already been on the floor. Due process is a legal requirement that the government treat people fairly and...
Alder, I'm not sure that due process is relevant to the question of appointments.
So, but we just had a conversation.
Which was not relevant.
Okay, so where can I bring it up? When we have discussion related to the censure, would that be an order?
You're welcome to try and make it relevant in that context, but it's not relevant in the context of appointments.
I will yield. I withdraw.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make a few points. First of all, you certainly have the authority to make appointments to these committees. I'm going on record as saying that I think your actions in this case are prejudicial. I think it's interfering with the ability of the current appointed alder to represent his constituents on those committees. And I also feel like that your appointments on this committee is certainly, seems to be politically motivated. So I'll yield from that.
Thank you, Alder.
And I won't be supporting this.
I have no other alders in the queue. Alder Miyazze.
Mayor, one thing I want to say is this. I have always, if you do an open record request, I have always attended every meeting almost faithfully. And every single committee, my fellow alders can tell you, I have never, not once, said anything out of pocket to anybody during a meeting. I humbly pray that you please reconsider your decision. As an alder, I can go to any committee. I've gone to committees that I don't even serve on, whether it might be Finance Committee, whether it might be any committee, just to be able to serve my constituents. And I beg you that the Parks Commission, where I serve on, the north side, has a lot of green spaces, where we've championed a lot, a lot of things have came through your desk for approval. You even asked me to serve on the Alcohol License Review Committee after you appointed. So I just humbly ask you, you can't stop me from going to committees, because I will be able to go there to raise my constituents' concerns. And I apologize to anybody. If I've gone to a committee, if I've gone somewhere and I've said something that, or inappropriate, that you deemed inappropriate, I apologize to anybody. But all I'm saying, do not hold back my ability to serve my constituents, especially while I'm still in office. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. Anticipating disagreement, all those in favor of Item 22, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Bedderville?
Aye.
Aye. Aldo Weheli?
No.
Aldo Bennett is excused. Aldo Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Aldo Curry?
Aye.
Aldo Duncan?
Aye.
Aldo Evers?
Aye.
Aldo Field?
Aye.
Aldo Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aldo Govendera?
Aye.
Aldo Uguera?
Aye.
Aldo Harrington McKinney?
No.
Aldo Knox?
No.
No. Aldo Latimer-Burris?
Abstained.
Abstained. Aldo Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Aldo Martinez Rutherford? My apologies, was that an aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aldo Miyazze?
No.
Aldo Rumel is excused. Aldo Tischler is excused. Aldo Revere?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I have 12 ayes, four noes, and one abstention.
Thank you. With 12 ayes, Item 22 will pass. And Aldo Evers?
If it would please the body, Mayor, I move that we take up Item 92.
Aldo Evers moves that we take up Item 92. Is there objection? Seeing no objection. We'll move to Item 92. Which is Legisstar 86221, censuring Aldo Charles Miyazze for conduct unbecoming of an alder. On Item 92, President Figaro Cole.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. On Item 92, are there questions for staff? Seeing, oh, Aldo Weheli? Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask Attorney Haas if he can walk us through the reports, what's before us, and what's the censorship? How is the censorship came up about this, about the censorship, but also the reports from the investigation? In other words, the investigation, and then in regards to the censorship?
Thank you, Alder. I guess I'll try to start with a brief explanation, see how deeply you want me to get into this. But the censorship resolution, I guess, to start with basics, is simply a way for the council to express its sentiments on any topic, just as you adopt resolutions, you know, expressing an opinion on many different issues, whether it's a local issue, state or federal issue, or worldwide issue, the council can go on record stating what the consensus of the majority is. So that's what the essential resolution is, just expressing the will or the sentiments of the council. The resolution, obviously, you have in front of you, expresses its disapproval of behavior of Aldo Miyazze. And that's what's before the council. The investigations, the investigation is cited in the resolution. Unlike a, unlike an effort or a complaint that would seek to remove an alder, there are no defined standards that have to be met for a resolution, a censure, a resolution to censure. As I said, it's like any other resolution, expressing the opinion of the council. So there's no legal burden like there is for a complaint to remove an alder, which requires that the council find cause before it votes to remove an alder from office. As I said, the resolution cites the investigation. It does not, you know, the, but they are in a way two separate things. The resolution does not rely on the results of the investigation necessarily. It's all, you know, what the council or individual members think is, you know, supports a vote to censure or not censure. So I circulated a memo to the council this afternoon, which reviewed or summarized some of the findings of the report, and explained some of the process that the city went through in conducting the investigation. That's all there for the council to review. I don't know if you want me to highlight any of those, but it's, is that something you wanted me to do? Are you interested in the process or in the results?
The findings.
The findings. So the findings that I summarized, and again, these are only points that I have been asked about, you know, some questions that our office received. And so those summaries are on Pages 2, 3, and 4 of the memo that I circulated. I'll just briefly run through those, starting with the fact that the complaints were, the outside investigator that the city hired evaluated the three complaints, the three separate complaints, using a legal standard called preponderance of the evidence, and also using a legal standard of a reasonable person. Those are, again, legal standards that are used in litigation, legal proceedings, and that's how the outside investigator understood his assignment. The investigation included some assessments of the credibility of the complainants and of Aldo Miyazze. I cited some language in the initial report, which concluded that the three complainants were credible. The initial report also stated that Aldo Miyazze was found to be a less credible witness. Then the second report, the supplemental report, noted that Aldo Bennett's account is consistent, and that Aldo Miyazze's submission of these additional supplementary materials raised some concerns about procedural delay. That was in the initial report. There are three complaints, as I stated. Just summarizing those quickly, the one complaint that was filed by a female resident, in the initial report, the conclusion was that the conduct that was alleged did not rise to the level of unlawful harassment or sexual harassment, and did not meet the definition of hostile work environment under the APM. I quoted the report, which stated that although the behavior exhibited towards the complainant was inappropriate, it made the complainant uncomfortable, it did not reach the level of severity, pervasiveness, or persistence required to constitute a policy violation. There is a complaint filed by a female city employee. The initial report concluded that the investigators could not sustain a finding of harassment, hostile work environment, or sexual harassment, described the alder's conduct as bizarre, unwelcome, uncomfortable, and inappropriate, but it concluded that it did not rise, again, to the level of severity, pervasiveness, or persistence required to constitute a violation of APM 3-5. Finally, the complaint that was filed by Aldo Bennett, in the initial report, it did conclude that Aldo Miyazze's conduct met the criteria of APM 3-5 for prohibited harassment and for creating a hostile work environment, but not for sexual harassment. That initial report also evaluated not only the APM, but the conduct... That initial report also evaluated not only the APM, but the conduct under applicable state and federal laws, and it concluded that the alder's conduct towards each of the three complainants did not constitute sexual harassment under state and federal laws, as it has been interpreted by court decisions. Then, of course, there is a supplemental report. Our office authorized or requested that the investigators reopen the report when Aldo Miyazze and his attorney requested an opportunity to have the investigators review additional information, including some text messages. And that's, so that supplemental report only addressed a complaint that was filed by Aldo Bennett. And that supplemental report altered the initial findings, and it concluded that, based on the review of that new evidence, and the supplemental interviews, and additional documents, the investigators concluded that there was, in fact, no violation of APM 3-5, or that no violation could be sustained as it related to Aldo Bennett's allegations. I also noted that, again, to try to put those findings into context, that while the supplemental report concluded that there was not a violation of APM 3-5, using the legal standards that a court would use, the investigation was critical of the alder's behavior towards each complainant, using characterizations of that behavior as concerning, likely even troubling. The initial report described the alder's actions towards one of the complainants as unwanted, likely distasteful, odd and bizarre, unwelcome and uncomfortable. And also, both of the reports described the claims, the allegations of the three complainants as valid, consistent, and credible. Just a couple more points I noted, that in our staff review of the investigation reports, I think it was our conclusion, and the investigator conveyed this to us in a telephone conversation, that the analysis and conclusions may have been different, or likely would have been different, if the allegations were alleged against a city employee or coworker, rather than with whom the complainants had daily contact. That was because the analysis had, part of the analysis had to do with whether a hostile work environment was created, and so there was some consideration about what the degree of contact was between the complainants and Aldo Miyazze on a daily basis. The final point that I made was that, you know, this was not an assessment of all complaints against Aldo Miyazze taken together. As courts do, the investigators looked at each complaint separately, and determined whether there was harassment or a hostile work environment created for that complainant. And so, you know, the investigator was not asked to do a more holistic assessment of the impact on the work environment as a whole, or all employees as a whole, they just made those conclusions regarding each complainant. So those were the points that I raised, and as, again, some of that was in response to questions we had received to help to clarify what the investigation meant and what it said.
Thank you. May I have a follow-up question? Okay. So from what I'm hearing, both from the council, is this is just a way of the council body to acknowledge the dissatisfaction of Aldo Miyazze's action? Is that how I'm interpreting?
Right.
Okay. So if you recall, when I introduced the Code of Conduct in 2022, there was, the reason why that particular resolution was not adopted is because it was too punitive for a particular alder who was creating a hostile environment within the council. And we could call the individual and say, you know, we are dissatisfied. So do we need censorship to say that we are dissatisfied with Aldo Miyazze's behavior while acknowledging the hurt and the harm he caused to the women without following particular process? And that's my question, is what is the ground rule for us to create this censorship without particular evidence for that matter? Because like most, some people indicated, we spent over 20,000 taxpayers' money to investigate, and even though there was some inconsistency with Aldo Miyazze's behavior in terms of the legal, for the state statute and the municipal statute, there was no such grounding. So are we... My question is, are we starting such a precedent that can be able to bring the city into lawsuit?
Well, Alder, I'm hearing a few different questions, so let me just make a couple points, and we'll see where that leads us. I think that, first of all, I think the cost of investigation was a little less than 20,000, but setting that aside, as I said, this is a resolution, it's entirely up to the council to determine whether it wants to pass a resolution, whether the council thinks that there's enough reason or support to pass a resolution. That's a judgment for all of you, not for me. And you mentioned the Code of Conduct that the council had passed. It is a little bit confusing, because we have a Code of Conduct, we also have APM 3-5. There are two separate documents, two separate procedures. The fact that there is a Code of Conduct does not mean that we don't look to APM 3-5. And APM 3-5 is there as a mayoral directive, and there is specific language that talks about 3-5 complaints that involve an alder as the subject of the complaint. And the city has an obligation, a legal obligation, to try to ensure that a hostile work environment is not created for its employees. And in this case, one of the complainants was an employee, one was obviously an alder, and so because they had all come in so close together, we essentially packaged them and asked the outside investigator to look at APM 3-5, and also the state and federal laws, all sort of in one process. And that led to a pretty comprehensive explanation about, in the report, about what 3-5 meant, and what the state and federal laws meant.
Thank you. Final question, Madam Mayor. So you said the APM-3.5 applies to the city employees, not the Alders?
Not quite. It definitely applies to city employees. It applies to Alders in that if a complaint is filed against an alder under APM 3-5, there can be an investigation. The difference is, as we've talked about several times, what can be done about it, what the remedies are. Obviously, with city employees, supervisors can discipline, it can either, can take corrective action, a letter of instruction, or discipline, suspension, termination, possibly. Elected officials are not subject to those procedures. The only way an elected official or an alder could be removed, again, is either by a hearing in front of the council after somebody's filed a complaint, or by recall of the voters.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Alder Bennett, welcome back. Hope that your dad is okay, and we are in questions for staff on item 92. And you're next.
Thank you. I literally just walked out of the room where my dad is in the ER, and he's stable. So thank you for everyone that's checked in. These are just yes or no questions, Attorney Haas. Or maybe you can add a little bit of explanation when you say it. Did or did not the investigation report completely exonerate Aldo Miyazze of any wrongdoing?
Alder, you know, first of all, I would say, as attorneys like to say, you know, the investigation speaks for itself. In my opinion, given what I just outlined about the investigation findings, in my opinion, the reports did not exonerate Aldo Miyazze insofar as the behavior that was alleged. The investigation made conclusions about what that behavior constituted in relation to the legal standards that were being evaluated.
Right, but they did not completely exonerate him of any wrongdoing?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
But they didn't completely exonerate him of any wrongdoing.
I don't believe so.
Okay. And if, let's pretend that this weren't an alder, if this were a city employee, and the behaviors exhibited in the report were as they are, would they still be employed with the city of Madison?
That's difficult to say, Alder. I mean, all of these are really fact-based, and the city has a progressive discipline process, you know, we take into account what the history was, the severity of what the behavior is, and a lot of different factors, so it would really, you have to really look at specific facts to make a determination about what the result would be.
Okay. And each of the complainants were found to be credible. In your opinion, does credible mean truthful?
Yes.
And what does less than credible mean?
Well, if you put it in those terms, I guess less truthful.
Right. So lying. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Knox, you're muted.
No, I'll wait for discussion.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Harrington McKinney, questions?
This is for Attorney Haas, along the, not going to ask for a yes or no question, but I'm going to read the paragraph, and then you help me out, okay? Of the report, item number three, it says...
Are you looking at my memo or the report?
Of the report. It's dated December 10th?
Okay.
2024. And I was looking for one and two, but I can start with three. Okay. Regarding the complaint filed against Aldo Miyazze by the female resident, the initial report concluded that the alleged conduct did not constitute unlawful harassment or sexual harassment, and did not meet the definition of hostile work environment under APM 3-5. And so would that be a credible statement, or not a credible statement? I mean, is that a...
It's a true statement about what the report found.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I'm just within the report. Okay. And then for item number four, it says, regarding the complaint filed by the female city employee, the initial report concluded that the investigators could not sustain a finding of harassment, hostile work environment, or sexual harassment. Did I read that correctly?
Right.
Okay. For number five, it said, regarding the complaint filed by Aldo Bennett, the initial report concluded that Aldo Miyazze's conduct met the criteria under APM 3-5 for prohibited harassment and creating a hostile work environment, but not sexual harassment. Did I read that correctly?
Right.
Six, the initial report concluded that Aldo Miyazze's conduct towards each of the complaints did not constitute sexual harassment under state and federal law as defined and interpreted by current court decisions. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Item number seven, the supplemental report addresses only the complaint filed by Aldo Bennett and alters the initial... Let me start again. Seven, the supplemental report addresses only the complaint filed by Aldo Bennett and alters the initial findings. The supplemental report concludes that based on a careful review of the new evidence, including text messages, supplemental interviews, and additional documents, we conclude that no violation of APM 3-5 can be sustained as it relates to Aldo Bennett's allegations against Miyazze. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Eight, while concluding that Aldo Miyazze did not violate provisions of APM 3-5 using standards that would apply in the context of a court case, the investigation reports were critical of his behavior towards each complainant. Did I read that correctly?
Sure.
Okay. And so if I'm reading this correctly, with the document, the president of the council issued a statement assuming that none of this was included, and so that was what I guess that I'm looking at process, because what I read was contrary to what I heard. If we're looking at the process, and we're looking at a violation of 3-5 in the report of what I read, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, it does not say that there is a violation sustained for APM 3-5. So I'm having a bit of a problem with the censor, thank you for helping, I'm tired. But what I'm reading is in contrary to what the outcome is, and so I'm missing what the process is. How do we get from reading 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 to censorship? Where do we miss? Where am I missing?
Well, I guess, Alder, a couple things. I would repeat what I said earlier, but in a sense, these are two separate matters. The censure resolution does not rely on any particular findings in the report, or any findings that there was or was not a violation. The first therefore clause says, be resolved that the city of Madison common council formally censures Aldo Charles Miyazze for his conduct described in the investigation report, which failed to meet the professional and ethical standards required of a council member. And so that is not relying on whether or not the investigation concluded that there was a violation of APM 3-5, it's pointing to the conduct that's described in the report. That's what the resolution is proposed to be. As I said, it's up to the council to determine whether the council agrees that the conduct that is described in the report warrants a censure. that the conduct that is described in the report warrants a censure.
And so, what, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding is that with the report, the resolution or we have the opportunity to vote on whether we are in agreement with what's in the report or not in the agreement? Am I missing?
Well, I guess I stated a little...
Make it ABC because I'm not very smart here.
I'll try, Alder. I would be a little bit maybe more nuanced in that, let's imagine there was no investigation report, but that somebody came to you stating all of these same facts and that the city did not conduct an investigation, you had no investigation report, but you had a set of facts presented to you. The council could take that and decide whether or not it warranted a censure, regardless of APM 3-5 or any state or federal laws that apply. The council doesn't have to find that there was a violation of a law or even city policy to decide to censure an Alder. As I've been attempting to explain, this is completely up to your discretion, whether or not you think the behavior that was described or any conduct of Alder Meazey warrants the council going on record to say that it disapproves of that behavior.
And so, if I carry what you just said to the next level, then does that also mean? And I guess what my question is that I'm trying to float in frame is that there is no discussion about whether he is violating the essence of his duties and why he was elected. It is purely on behaviors. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by why...
So, there was nothing in the report. And one of the, earlier, one of the persons that testified is that there was nothing in the report that talked about performance as an Alder in his district. None of that was considered.
Well, I would say two things. The report did not focus on things like constituent service, committee activity, introducing legislation. It focused on the behavior that was alleged in the complaint. And in some instances, it was clear that this behavior was alleged to have taken place during city business, at conferences that people attended as elected officials and/or city staff. That's, to me, that's still Alder's business.
Okay, the rest I'll just do during discussion.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, I assume your hand is still up for discussion, not for questions? Okay. Alder Figaro Cole, do you have questions?
Thank you. Attorney Haas, if I want to, well, I don't want to, but if someone wanted to write an honorary resolution to highlight the accomplishments of Alder Meazey, they can also do that. They just need 11 votes to get it passed correct.
Correct.
So, just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Meazey, questions?
Attorney Haas.
Please speak into the mic, Alder.
Sorry about that, mayor. Attorney Haas, I just have a question. What was sustained before the subsequent report? Can you just read what was sustained?
In the initial report?
Yes.
The, as I said, the initial report concluded that Alder Meazey's conduct met the criteria under APM 3-5 for prohibited harassment and creating a hostile work environment, but not sexual harassment. That was regarding the complaint filed by Alder Bennett.
So, in the subsequent report, when it was overturned, I'm just curious as why, when it was not sustained? Why didn't, there was a lot of commentary put into this report. Why wasn't anything said I was credible due to the information that I presented? Wasn't, so I'm just wondering, what overturned the decision from being hostile to not hostile?
Well, again, I mean, the Alders all have the report. You can read it for yourself. As I stated in my memo, it just, it altered the initial finding. And as we've stated a couple of times, it said that the investigators reviewed the new evidence, including text messages, supplemental interviews, and additional documents, and concluded that no violation of APM 3-5 can be sustained as it relates to Alder Bennett's allegations against Alder Meazey.
I guess my last question is for you, attorney. If I had an investigation that was done and I lied during the investigation, what can be done legally to address this? I think you take it very, very important as far as having an investigation done, people being truthful, being honest during the investigation. What can be done if I was going through an investigation and I wasn't truthful?
Do you mean what can be done by the city? Or I'm not...
City, any ramification.
You know, as I said, the options under the statutes are limited for what actions can be taken related to an elected official.
What about in the common council as we serve in?
The common council really has only one option under its own control, which is a censure resolution. The other alternatives are either they rely or depend on somebody filing a complaint. Could be an Alder, could be a resident, and going through an entire hearing. That is not initiated by the council. Or the other alternative is a recall, and that's completely up to the voters.
Thank you, Attorney Haas.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So, item 92 has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion, Alder Knox? We may have lost Alder Knox. All right, Alder Bahili. Alder?
Madam Mayor. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks everyone who came in tonight and testified. It has been very hard for everyone involved and everyone who have been here and who have been affected by this. First of all, I would like to acknowledge all the women who took the courage to come forward. I feel your pain, harm, and hurt. I didn't sponsor the resolution because of my personal commitment to criminal justice system. See, I had the privilege of working at Just Dine for more than three years as the development director. During my tenure at the Just Dine, I saw black men coming out of prison every Tuesday for crimes they haven't committed or for wrongfully imprisonments. Tonight's testimony were hurtful and emotional. I disagree with some of it. One person said society protects abusive men. Yes, but the society does not protect black men. Another person said women are not believed. Yes, women are not believed, but also black men are not believed. Let me give you a status about the black men in Wisconsin, not dismissing the hurtful and the harm expressed by the women. According to Wisconsin Watch Report, one of every 36 black men in Wisconsin is in prison. The report found black people comprise of 40% of the Wisconsin prison population, but just 6% of the state population. You can see the disparities. Secondly, the analysis also examined the disparity in imprisonment rates between black and white people nationwide. Black Americans are imprisoned at nearly five times the rate of white Americans. The report found, and in Wisconsin, the ratio is even higher, 12 times the rate. Advocates for prison reform in Wisconsin were disheartened by the report's findings, calling them depressing and embarrassing. So, forgive me if I'm taking my time. Forgive me if I have commitment to be the last person to convict a black man. Forgive me if I need a due process that really needs and provide the evidence. Based on Alder Harrington McKinney, the questions she asked attorney Haas from point 1 to 7 literally expressed that there was inconsistency. I'm not supporting Alder Meazey. I'm not believing in Alder Meazey. But I made a personal commitment to have a due process, but also to have a valid process that can really have the outcome that we really need. Secondly, I would like to address the council failure to address this matter earlier by adapting the Code of Conduct in 2022. I introduced and authored Code of Conduct. At that time, it was expressed that we don't need to police Alders for their behavior. It was too punitive to adhere to the culture of the council to provide a conducive and pleasant environment. It was very toxic. And when we introduced that resolution, it was put on file and later on adapted in a more compromised, which in the beginning, it had like council-to-council behavior, council-to-staff behavior, council-to-community members' behavior, council-to-the-media behavior, and council-to-the-staff. All that were thrown out of the ordinance or resolution, and we introduced something like just a compromise. So, for that reason, I am not going to support or not support, but I'll be abstaining because I find it's in our hands as a council to have a president to really get the facts and hear what it is like, you know, if it was hearing. That's our next choice. Perhaps we should have a hearing. If the women came forward and filed a complaint, that's another option. So, without dismissing any of what was shared tonight, I want to express again that I am not in a position, from my heart, to censor Alder Meazey. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to take my time going through this. The definition for due process is a legal requirement that the government treat people fairly and respect their legal rights when making decisions that could affect their life, liberty, or property. It is a fundamental right in the United States Constitution and is guaranteed by the Fifth and Fourth Amendment. One person who testified tonight created for me a hostile work environment and consistently harassed me. But I did not have the courage to file a complaint. And I'm sorry that I did not do that. I am not on the fence for my support of Charles Meazey. He is due process. And I think that that was overturned even before we got the full redacted report. The president of the common council had already issued that he was guilty. The man and his commitment to serve his community was not challenged. I see a wayward child placed in foster care, navigating through the system as a young handsome black man, one who had created a false image of what a man should be toward women, entering into one relationship after another, all beginning with bliss and ending in toxic waters. But this censure is not about Charles Meazey's service for his district. It's about how he sees and interacts with women. A black man with a broken history that has not faced what is broken inside of him that draws him into similar relationships over and over again. We are not his therapists, nor should we be his jurors. There is always two sides to every story. Justice should look at both sides. In this case, the charges against Alder Meazey were revised because the evidence showed that there was no hostile work environment between his accuser and himself. I read 90-plus text messages inferring quite the opposite for many months, for many years. His life's recurring theme with women ended the same physical attraction and ended in toxic relationships for both sides. There is need for healing and harm reduction on both sides of the relationships. I believe he is a good and decent man. I believe that the women he is drawn to and who are likewise drawn to him are good and decent people. But whatever draws Alder Meazey into and causes these good individual relationships to remain or start healthy and remain harmful relationships, that is not for me to decide. That is not our jobs to figure out. Professional counseling is needed. But this censure is outside of what should be considered. The process, there was a complaint that violated APM 3.5 workplace misconduct. There was a complaint filed. There was an independent investigation. The findings first were revoked or changed. I read 90-plus text messages that were presented in evidence supporting a professional and social interaction between the complainant and Alder Meazey. The original findings of the independent investigation was reversed. That is what the process dictates. There was, it was biased. Alder Meazey was tried and convicted not by actions of the complainant's charges. Let me go back. I'm getting ahead. Alder Meazey was tried and convicted, but by the judgment of, oh, okay, I know what it is. Alder Meazey was tried and convicted not by the actions of the complainant's charges, but by the judgment of the council president and the council members who signed onto the resolution. If others outside the council felt that litigation was a viable option, Charles Meazey should be charged in court. From a person who does not live in his district, urging him to resign immediately... From a person who does not live in his district, urging him to resign immediately so that all involved can begin to heal and so that all residents of Madison can be effectively represented by the Common Council. Consider this. Aldo Miyatsi also needs to heal, time to heal. He has done an excellent job providing service to his constituents. They believed in him when they elected him over an incumbent. This council has successfully beaten him down. At no time did the mayor, chief of staff, or anyone in the administrative authority have counsel with him when such allegations first flourished. I stand with Aldo Miyatsi because I believe that there are two sides to each story, and we only heard one side. I have a right to say this because I am a survivor. And my healing did not start until I could look at my survivor and say, I forgive you, even though that person never admitted what he had done. But I had to do that to move on and to release the hate that was in my heart and the guilt that was in my spirit. I stand beside this man because I asked him one question. I said, when you look in the mirror, he loves his children. And I asked him, when you look in the mirror and you see your daughter, what kind of man do you want to be in your daughter's life? And my challenge to him is that you have to treat women the way that you would want someone to treat your daughter. And so I stand by him because I believe in that. I'm a person of deep and abiding faith, and I have to see the good outweigh the bad. And I'm working to make sure that he continues to look in the mirror and ask himself, the question is, how am I showing up in this event? So I will not be supporting this sanction. I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna cut to the chase. So the conclusion of the investigation in this, in these investigation was that from one complainant, it did not constitute unlawful harassment or sexual harassment, and it did not meet the definition of a hostile work environment. The second complainant, they could not sustain the findings of harassment, hostile work environment, or sexual harassment. And then in the final one related to Aldo Bennett, in the supplemental report, as you all read, it said, after reviewing new evidence, it concluded that no violation of APM 3 to five could be sustained regarding Aldo Bennett. That's the conclusion of our administrative process. Now, people are talking about concerning behaviors. Well, okay, so in addition to that, it talked about concerning, troubling, unwanted, distasteful, odd, bizarre, unwelcome, and uncomfortable. Now, I would argue that I've had all of those kinds of interactions with some of my fellow alders here, and you know this. But does that raise the level to censoring us? We have heated conversations all the time. They're uncomfortable. They're troubling. They're distasteful. I don't know about the odd and bizarre, but they certainly are unwelcome and uncomfortable. It's kind of like goes with the territory of what we do. We try to be respectful, but we get into heated conversations, which I've had several, and that's kind of what happens. So those behaviors, is that something that you really feel compelled to censor? You need to ask yourself this question. I've been a protected status investigator for over 30 years of my public service career in the state of Wisconsin as well as Dane County. I'll also add that I've always lived in a female-dominated household. I have six sisters. Actually, I have five now. A week ago, one of my sisters passed away, and I have four daughters. So I take this issue of sexual harassment and domestic violence very seriously. So I don't want anybody to think that I don't. And I think my career has proven through all the investigations I've done that I take it seriously as well. But the facts are, the conclusions of that investigation did not sustain those allegations. And what that means is you have to do a fact finding. You have to determine facts. You start out with allegations, and then you have to determine the facts, and you have to have evidence to support those facts. Otherwise, that's what they are, their allegations. Facts require witnesses or collaborating information to support them. And you know, I'm going to tell you something. Oftentimes, we cannot support the allegations. It doesn't mean they are true, and it doesn't mean they are true. We can't support them with facts or collaborating information, and that's the process that we go through. So you got to ask yourself, when someone goes through an investigative process and it's determined that the allegations are not sustained, as in this case, is it appropriate for us to penalize them, to censor them, or worse, to remove them from committees? I think that's prejudicial, highly prejudicial. I probably could say some other things too, but I'm not going to say that. But it certainly brings to question, why are you penalizing someone for accusations that have not been proven? In effect, you take away this alder's elected right to represent his constituents. See, ultimately, it's the voters that should determine whether Aldo Miyatsi should represent them or not. Now, we got asked ourselves, do we support our own process? Do we really believe in our own procedure or the rule of law? I mean, do we really have faith in our process? Because if we don't, what's the point of having it? We shouldn't even have it. If somebody's going to go through this process, prevail through the process, and then you penalize them like they did not prevail, what is the point? What is the point? Now, the behaviors that was described beyond that, that no finding are all behaviors that pretty much happen all the time. It's behaviors that we are all too familiar with. So this is an issue of, in my mind, of due process. And I'm going to tell you another thing. I think the timing is curious too. I mean, let's think about this. The timing of this coming out, I've actually heard people threaten the alders who did not support this resolution, that people are coming after us. Really? They're coming after us for upholding to the rule of law? Now, you could believe whatever you want to. You could choose to believe the person has committed these or they're not. But the fact of the matter is, our role in government, we have rules in this body. We have rules that we follow all the time, and if we're not subject to the rules that we follow, then it all becomes, I don't like this person, so I'm going to do a no confidence vote about him. You might not like my language. You probably don't like my tone. So does that mean I'm engaging in conduct that is unrepresented of an order? To who? Who's the judge? Oh, you guys are the judge now of what behaviors constitute appropriate or not. You know, it's the voters. We're subject to our constituents, and they know what to do if they don't like what we're doing. They can recall us, or they could vote us out. So this vote of confidence, okay, I get it. It's like, oh, we're going to send a message, but you know, really? It's politically motivated. You're doing a political assassination of one of your co-alders, and none of you would like somebody to do that to you. Nobody would. It's not our job to judge each other. It's those residents, those citizens that we represent, they judge us, and they judge us at the ballot box. So anybody who wants to try to threaten me, you know, or do politicking up here, all of a sudden, I'm sorry. That's not appropriate. We come here, I know one thing about Charles is he does represent his constituents. That I can tell you. I don't know about his personal life. I don't hang out with him. I can't tell you how he interacted with women. That is not for me to determine. And you should focus on this investigation, our process, what our process determined and what it left us with. You start bringing in all this other stuff about who you believe, well, you know what? People make statements, but you know what? Those statements are just allegations because they have not been investigated. They have not been investigated. It has not been determined that they are factual, or they have been collaborated. So you need to deal with our process that we spent taxpayer money to go through. It made a conclusion, and we need to follow it, support it, and do what we're supposed to do. So every one of you who want to make this into an inquisition, because that's what it's turning out to be, for whatever reason, you don't like Charles or you believe somebody else, that's fine. Believe them. And you're right, this is a process where it's just an opinion. So if you want to be, you know what the easy route is?
Alder Knox, you're at 10 minutes.
I'm going to finish what I have to say. I don't talk that much, but you can give me another minute to finish what I have to say. You know, that's the issue. It's easy to go along with this just to avoid some political prosecution, but have the guts to follow our process that we put in place, the rules that we put in place, and stick with it. So thank you, Ms. Mayor, for giving me a few extra seconds.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martinez-Rutherford, and I'll just remind the council to please adjust your remarks to the chair. Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I'm sitting here listening to a lot of skirting around the issue. I keep hearing, this is a witch hunt. This is, there are good people on both sides. And as a person of deep, abiding faith, a faith leader, I am sitting here saying to everyone here, including you, that we need to make sure people are held accountable, not because this is a legal body that's happening, this is not court. But what has been reported to us is a concerning pattern of behavior, which is unbecoming of an alder. And for me, it comes down to that. This has been multiple people who have said, had these concerns and expressed them, and I have to work in an office and space with many of them, several of them, looking at their eyes, listening to their stories. And when I hear their stories, I believe them. Do you know why? Because I've been in that space. So we can talk about this being a legal body, but when it comes down to it, what this is is a censure for us to say, we believe as a council, that this is unbecoming of an alder. This is unbecoming behavior that has been said several times over many years. It's not out of the blue, all of a sudden, everybody came and said last week. This is a serious matter, and people's lives are impacted from it. And I am all about making sure that people have a chance to redeem themselves. And if somebody comes and says, hey, I'm willing to admit where I've made error and ask for a path forward, then we'll do that. But at this current stage, all I'm hearing are several people who came forth, who are credible people, have been deemed credible by this investigation that we've had. They've been deemed credible, and we've seen a pattern of behavior that is concerning and unbecoming of an alder. I don't care who it is, that is not okay. And when my colleagues and people that work really hard for the city have to interact with that person when they have been harmed by that person, then that is the problem. And so I am going to support this because I believe survivors, and I believe that this process is merited and warranted. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder Martinez-Rutherford. And again, please refrain from expressions from the gallery. Alder Wahili for the second time on the question.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to respond in reference to accountability. As per my earlier comment, in 2022, when the Code of Conduct was introduced, that particular alder was not held accountable. There was a complaint from the staff, from this-
I'm sorry, hold on, Alder.
Because I'm bringing accountability as a body-
One of your colleagues has asked for a point of order, Alder. Alder Duncan? Point of order?
From 2023 is not anything with this resolution. This resolution is Charles Miyatsi.
Alder Wahili?
My reference is, Madam Mayor, is when we are holding ourselves accountable, who are we accountable to? And when are we accountable? So when there has been accusation in terms of harassment, hostile environment from the staff, from the community members, from other alders, and this body did not work on it or even respond to it, then we pick and choose who we want to punish or who we want to choose to censor. That time, it was protecting a white man and not holding him accountable for what he did, for the staff, for the alders, and for the community members. And if we are being fair and just, we should have a fair process for all of us. No one, and no one should be free and just, you know, you're okay, and it's too punitive to punish this person. I am not saying, and I'm not blindly supporting Aldo Miyatsi. He has to be accountable for what he did. He has to look for help, seek for help, and I'm here to help the council any way or any means that I can to have a conducive work environment for all of us, for the staff, for the alders, and for the community members. And I'm willing to take that promise that this should not happen again. If we acted on that resolution, today we will not have this discussion. Aldo Miyatsi will not be here today because we could have held him accountable based on that resolution. It laid out significantly better in a way that everyone is accountable. So when we say accountable, let's reflect. Let's think about how we are reflecting. Let's think about how we are reflecting and who we hold accountable to the community and to us. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a lot that I want to respond to over here because there has been, I I don't think I've ever seen such a rewriting of history on this council floor ever before. There has been so much harm created. There has been so much, um, harm created and put onto the speakers who have come up today. People who have had to re-traumatize themselves just to share their stories. And that is not what should have happened today. We've heard from multiple Alders today that this is not about due process. And I think that is bull crap. If none of us cared about due process, or if I didn't care about due process, I would have introduced this back in April. But no, I waited until an independent investigation took place. But instead, when the investigation did take place and got publicized, we had Alders say, why wasn't the Alders part of this? You know, that's a great question. Why did we not have elected politicians sit on a committee to make decisions about another elected politician? I think that makes perfect sense to me. But that's the kind of response that many of the Alders who have spoken before me initially responded with. Another speaker said that just because we might not like their language or their tone, maybe we should introduce a censure resolution. And no, that's not the case. But if any of the Alders here engage in the behavior that we've seen from Aldo Miyazi, I will promise you, I will write another censure resolution. Because that is what this is about. This is about the pattern of behavior we have seen from Aldo Miyazi that is inappropriate and unethical. And that is indeed unbecoming of an alder. That is what this is about. This resolution is about doing the right thing, which is putting out this council stating that we believe that this conduct is wrong. I'll get to my actual speech now. I wrote this resolution, again, like I just said, because it is the right thing to do and that is the only reason. This investigation found that Aldo Miyazi engaged in behavior that is unethical and inappropriate and that is unbecoming of an alder. He did not break the law, but I do believe he violated the trust placed in him by the City of Madison residents. And that is key. Elected representatives should be held to a higher standard, period. And we've seen that all day today. We've seen that residents have spoken and proven that they do not have trust in Aldo Miyazi. And that is also what this independent investigation found. This is most likely, I believe, going to be the most important vote that I take because this vote does set a precedence for the future and a precedence for accountability, which we have lacked when it comes to issues like this historically in this country. One of the previous speakers said this already, but there's a good chance that this happens again in the same body and that is very unfortunate. But I'm hopeful that this censure is a step forward, as symbolic as it might seem, that it sets a precedence. I'm hopeful that this censure leads to a change in our state laws potentially, where this form of harassment is illegal and we do have better form of justice instead of just a censure resolution. I'm hopeful that this resolution leads the council to updating our own policies. Just because Alder Bennett's ability to maintain a cordial relationship with Aldo Miyazi, that should not have been the detriment to this. Just because she was able to do that, the report found that there is no, uh, law breaking and that just does not seem right to me. Especially when Alders, like all of us, we are required to basically maintain a good relationship with everyone, regardless of our personal relationships with us, for the benefit of our constituents. The women who have spoken up against Aldo Miyazi over the past several months are some of the strongest people I have met. I have spoken to several of them over the past couple of months and they they have so much courage and bravery that I will never have personally. But I believe it is so wrong that society has put them in a position to testify in front of a body such as ours in a public way. And they did it anyway. They spoke up in a way, each of them, they spoke up in a way that provides them the safety that they needed, even if speaking up invites being traumatized all over again. But as a man, I have the privilege to choose if I care about this issue, just because I'm a guy. And that's wrong, you know? The discussion of sexual harassment and workplace intimidation and all of that, it's one that society has deemed to be a woman's issue and that is wrong. I disagree with that. I believe that men need to speak up. I believe we need to speak up early. It's the 21st century. And that also means that it is not racist to demand accountability. We have heard throughout the day today, the implication that it is racist to introduce this censure resolution. Again, I disagree with that. I will say it again. The censure resolution was introduced because it is the right thing to do. The conduct by Aldo Miyazi is wrong and unbecoming of an alder. That deserves to be called out and that is what this resolution is. I am voting in favor of this because I believe Aldo Miyazi engaged in disgusting and unethical behavior. I encourage the other Alders to vote in favor of this because again, it is the right thing to do. It is not political. It is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox for the second time.
Thank you. Just want to remind people again, it talked about Aldo Miyazi's behavior was criticized and described as concerning, troubling, unwanted, distasteful, odd, bizarre, unwelcome and uncomfortable. We really need to think about that a little bit. You know, those are probably, as I mentioned, behaviors when we get into heated conversations that we do have unwelcome conversation and distasteful ones. I'm not trying to avoid the situation, but that's all we have here. Everything else is speculation. Everything else are allegations. And if you want to get to the bottom of those allegations, they need to be investigated. And a lot of what people are telling me when I talk to them about this issue is, I believe this person, that's fine, believe them then. And then you vote accordingly. But that doesn't mean it's evidence. And I don't think that if we get around to censoring each other based on what somebody said, then what do we have? What do we really have?
Thank you, Alder. We have three Alders in the queue at the moment. There's a call for the question and a second. Is there objection to calling the question?
Yes, there's objection to calling the question.
Right. So will you withdraw the call or do we need to vote on it? All right.
Hold on.
The call has been withdrawn. Uh, Aldo Miyazi and then Alder Bennett.
I'd like to speak on my own behalf as a first member of this body to undergo a vote of censor. Before you cast your vote, I ask you to reflect on fairness and also implications of this resolution. Last year, I encountered a conflict with a fellow alder. But rather than allowing it to escalate, I adhere to the principles outlined in Ethical Elected and Appointed Official Code of Conduct. The code emphasizes the importance of self-correction and informal resolution between parties, encouraging timely communication to address issues collaboratively with formal sanctions as rare and last resort. Following the approach, we sat down, discussed our differences and worked together. The result of the collaboration was successful. We championed dog ordinance together, demonstrated the power of reconciliation and teamwork, even in spite of our disagreements. Also, as I had conference, uh, conversations with some of you that faced unjust accusations, personal attacks during your campaign and through the tenure of your alder, I sympathize with you and supported you. Some of you have also told me about partners of yours have been unjustly accused. And I sympathize with you guys. However, I faced significant challenges during my tenure. Earlier this year, a fellow alder in a leadership began, began sending me defamatory emails to me. And because she, what she heard on Facebook posts in March, without even a complaint was filed. I chose not to judge, retaliate, believing mutual respect and understanding are essential for the body of this to function. I find this deeply troubling that troubling that this process of censure has become weaponized in a way to undermine trust and ability to work together. I'd like to address specific concerns that have been raised. The incident occurred more than 22 years ago, domestic violence, long before I was elected alder in city council. I took full responsibility for my actions at the time, completed the legal process and my charges were ultimately dismissed and expunged. This is how the system is designed to work in progressive Madison. We pride ourselves about second chances, believing in prior, uh, believing that prior arrest records and convictions should not somehow come back from unemployment or public service. This incident has no relevance to my current role to be in a censure resolution. The three complaints against me, one by alder, city employee and nonprofit, these complaints went through a thorough investigation by the city. As you said, costed $18,000, also $13,000 of my own money to, uh, for my own attorney. On the question on whether my conduct violated APM 3-5, the investigator concluded not sustained for all three complaints. On the question whether my conduct violated any state or federal laws, the vacation, the investigation again concluded not sustained for all three complaints. There was no finding of violation and yet this resolution moves forward. The investigation process itself was flawed and unfair. I was not given an opportunity to review the allegations made against me before I was questioned. I was asked to recall specific details years ago, such as what was alder wearing, particular incidents. Naturally, my answer was unclear. Furthermore, I was in, uh, investigated for violating sexual harassment appendix that did not exist at the time an alleged incident occurred. This kind of retroactive application is not only unjust, but also undermines integrity of the process. The impact of this resolution, let me just say, understand that some may feel that the complaints are more credible. However, I can only reiterate that the findings did not substantiate, substantiate the allegations. To vote to censor me based on unsustained claims is not only unfair to me, but it sets a dangerous precedence for this body. The experience I have has been incredibly painful. Being publicly accused of things I did not do has been humiliating, demoralizing. Having my name repeatedly mentioned in the media and baseless, uh, accusations has been unfair to my constituents who elected me to serve not only one term, but two terms with integrity and dedication. I have worked tirelessly, tirelessly to fulfill my responsibility as an alder, championing Northside Body Cameras to advocate for public safety equity. My record speaks for itself. I've sought to give my constituents a voice and to represent them with unwavering commitment. Before you vote, I ask you to do this. Especially on this resolution, I ask you to put yourself in my shoes. Consider the following. Are the grounds for this censure sustained by clear evidence? Does a resolution reflect the values and fairness of justice that we claim to uphold? Is the process truly serving the people of Madison? Or the distraction, or is it a distraction to the critical work we are elected to do? I'm not asking for special treatment. I'm simply asking for fairness. None of you have ever been subject to this process and I hope you never, ever will. To those who wonder why I haven't done a defamation lawsuit, let's be clear, this legal action is costly. And as a still worker, union worker and a father, my resources are limited. But I want to focus on just serving my constituents, not engaging in prolonged legal battles. I hope we can put this behind us and work together in serving the Madison residents. And another thing I just want to add, there's a lot of statements out there about women being abused. Let me say this, as a person that was in foster care most of my, most of my teenage years. So I'm not trying to say, oh, I'm just a victim. I'm just saying that we need to understand that everybody, no matter who, should be actually, uh, be accountable. So if I've said something to somebody, I'm telling you, I promise you, it is not meant to be. I apologize to anybody I've said something that's out of pocket. But my job here is to do the job in the will of the city. And I think since I've been an alder, I don't think I have done, uh, things to have me censored. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first and foremost say thank you. Shit.
Language, Alder Bennett.
Sorry. Can you still see my camera?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, God. This is why I wrote out myself, but I couldn't, I just, I couldn't do it for this one. I want to first and foremost say that, jeez, I can do this, okay? I'm gonna stop being dramatic. This is a reflection of my personal opinion and my experience. Sue me, please, do it. The truth is the counter to defamation. And also, I'm entitled to my personal opinion. Sue me. I want to say thank you to all those that came in support of me, the other women, and to everyone else that has experienced harm in this case. I especially want to thank Michelle McCoy and Jamie Johnson. I would not have said anything if it weren't for your bravery initially to come and speak forward. And when Aldo Miyazi's attorney says that it was not coincidental that all of us came forward at the same time, that is true. It's not coincidental because their bravery gave us the courage to speak up. Truly, I did not know who these women were before this. The claims that I'm not even going to waste my time and your time denying because I have my truth, that this is a political assassination is absolutely asinine. It's ridiculous and it's as psychotic as what Aldo Miyazi is accused of. That is not the case here. And within saying my truth, I will reiterate what happened to me. In, um, when I first met Aldo Miyazi, he repeatedly referred to himself as the lone wolf. And throughout this entire process, I have come to realize that that is a truthful characterization of Aldo Miyazi. I truly believe that he is a wolf in the hen's house. And looking back, I was so naive to what I was experiencing. And I wish that I could tell myself then what I know now. This is not something that we are taught in school how to deal with this as women. And I had a lot of women deal with abuse and harassment. We're not taught how to deal with that. And so many women have come forward to me before, after this, saying that their own personal experiences. In this instance, we have Jamie Johnson, Michelle McCoy, in 2023, another member of city staff and three other people, me, a city employee and a member of a public and many others that have come. and many others that have come to me privately, just in the case of Alder Miyatzis, making claims and allegations against him. When I attended the National League of Cities Conference, I was so excited when Alder Weyhelier let me know and invited me to it. I'd never been to something like that, I was 22 years old. And imagine my excitement being quickly tarnished by the weirdness of Alder Miyatzis' repeated His comments referring to what I was wearing, what, who I was having sex with, that's not just, as Alder, as the door knocks put it, goes with the territory of what we do. That is harassment, as I believe it is. And so then Alder Miyatzis had the nerve to say that I should have come to him personally. And when I reflect back on this, I did go to three other people that I trust and asked them for advice about what to do with this situation because he was making me feel so uncomfortable. I even texted two of my friends, I have those timestamp text messages characterizing what he was doing, asking for advice. And they let me know, you know, you just call him in versus call him out, all of that. On April 7th, I didn't get the opportunity to address him directly because he cornered me in the car and locked the doors on me and screamed in my face. That does not go with the territory of what we do, Alder Knox, as I would say to him if I were able to say to him, Mayor. Being black is not an excuse. Being black and being an abuser is not mutually exclusive. They can happen at the same time. So Mayor, I recognize I cannot address members of this body personally. However, if I were able to address members of this body personally, this is what I would say. Alder Harrington McKinney, when I first met you at Michelangelo's, you told me that you wanted to be my mentor, that you looked at me like I'm a daughter. I have zero respect for you. And I once did. I once had respect for you as a black leader. You clearly have demonstrated to me that you do not support women and black women. And I know you put yourself in the queue just now because you're not here to listen or to create understanding or hear us. You're here to respond. So please, go ahead, respond, do it. Alder, is a door knocks. I am truly fearful for your sisters and your daughters if this is how you treat women. I really hope-
Point of order, she's not supposed to be addressing-
I'm addressing the mayor.
No, you call me by name.
The alder is speaking to me.
Are you serious?
As I said, if I were-
Point of order.
Alder Knox, I hear your point of order. The alder is skating perilously close to the edge of what's allowed, but she has employed a framing which is unique and creative.
Yeah, okay, whatever.
Alder Bennett, be careful.
Thank you, okay. Well, I do feel very fearful and for them. And obviously, this is not a political thing. My dad, in October, had a massive episode of cardiac arrest, as you just witnessed today. I gave him CPR, we brought him to the ER. They let us know that he has three months to live, to maybe two years. And after we got that diagnosis, the thing that my dad and I were talking about is you and this situation. Alder Miyatzis has stolen precious time with my father, and I will never forgive him for that. I will never, ever forgive you for stealing time from my dad and for putting my family and my friends in this situation. Because it's not fair, and you are not taking accountability for what you're doing. The apology that I just heard is not an apology. If I were to, if one wanted to send an apology, email me, my door is open. Email me and send a very genuine apology, talk to me, how me you have, send me a voicemail that you are genuinely apologetic and take accountability for what happened because I know the truth, as the investigation stated. And lastly, I will say that the reason why I did this in the first place is for women, is for women of color. The rhetoric that has been stated by some has been so incredibly dangerous, and women are not safe with members of this body that believe such things. So to all the women out there, I'm here with you.
Alder, you're at 10 minutes.
Okay. I wish that this weren't the case, but here we are, and I will happily stand and take every single bullet in front of you so that the next person after me doesn't have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, Alder Harrington McKinney for the second-
And I called a question.
Alder Bennett has called the question. There are three alders in the queue yet again. Is there a desire to call the question and have a vote on that? Just a reminder, you have to have a vote on calling the question. It's not debatable, but there is a move in a second to call the question. So all those in-
Of order.
Alder Harrington McKinney, point of order.
My point of order is that the process of addressing the chair was violated, and specifically, my name was called. You had recognized me as being in the queue before the question was called. And so therefore, I should be able to express my, my response to you, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, Alder. Firstly, unfortunately, this council regularly violates the rule of addressing the chair, including using your colleagues' names. I do try and call it out, I'm not always successful, and I apologize for that. Secondly, the motion to call the question is unrelated to how many alders are in the queue or what has preceded that motion. It is a motion that can be made at any time and seconded, and if it is not withdrawn, the body needs to vote on it. I'm assuming there will not be unanimous consent to call the question. There is objection to calling the question. So all those in favor of calling the question, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. It's not debatable.
Alder Vittervir? Aye. Alder Weyhelier? No. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Field?
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Alder Govendurazin?
Aye.
Alder Uguere?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Alder Harrington McKinney? Go on.
Alder Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Latimer Burris has left. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Alder Miyatzis?
No.
Alder Rumble is excused. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes and two noes.
With fourteen ayes, the question is called, and we'll proceed to a vote. On item 92, censuring Alder Charles Miyatzis for conduct unbecoming of an alder, it has been moved and seconded to adopt. All those in favor of adoption, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Vittervir?
Aye.
Alder Weyhelier?
Steen.
Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Field?
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Alder Govendurazin?
Aye.
Alder Uguere?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney has left. Alder Knox?
No.
No. Alder Latimer Burris recused herself earlier. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Alder Miyatzis?
No.
Alder Revere?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I have 13 ayes, two noes, and one abstention.
Thank you. With 13 ayes, the motion will pass, and that will take us back to item 69, which is Legistar 86200, the year-end appropriation resolution. Alder Govendurazin?
Motion for a five-minute recess.
There's a motion and a second for a five-minute recess. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we'll take a five-minute recess and be back at 11:41. Please, and alders online to come back. If I could get alders to please take their seats, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Vittervir?
Present.
Alder Weyhelier?
Present.
Alder Bennett? It's no longer because- Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Curry?
Present.
Alder Duncan?
Present.
Alder Evers?
Present.
Alder Field?
Present.
Alder Figaro Cole?
Present.
Alder Govendurazin?
Present.
Alder Uguere?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney has left. Alder Knox?
Present.
Present. Alder Latimer Burris has left. Alder Madison?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Alder Miyatzis?
Present.
Alder Rumble is excused. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere?
Alder Revere is present.
Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Our next item is item 69, Legistar 86200, the year-end appropriation resolution. On this item, Alder, President Figaro Cole, a motion, please. Moved and seconded to adopt. On item 69, are there questions for staff? Alder Weyhelier?
Madam Mayor, I have sent an alternate resolution that will reflect the Derby-Worthington project for, because this appropriation is putting the 2.5 million that was supposed to be for the Salvation Army, and this will give Salvation Army the opportunity to sell their property by July of 2025. And if they don't, then that will be appropriated for the area as indicates on the original amendment, budget amendment in 2022. So I just sent the language. Since we are adopting the appropriation resolution to adapt the operating budget, I just thought maybe we can give some timeline for the Salvation Army to sell their property so, so that, you know, the Derby area can be able to utilize those fundings. Thanks.
So-
And I've sent the, the language to all alders, so it should be in your inbox.
I think properly, Alder, you're moving an amendment to add an additional-
Language.
Be it further resolved clause.
Yes.
So that's the motion. Is there a second? The motion will, I'm sorry, Alder, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So the amendment is moved and seconded. Alder, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. As you all know, the Worthington project has been in place for the last four years. They have been working with the staff in terms of finding collaboration with the city and those groups where are the Mentoring Positive, the Just Dane, and the African Center, and to find a project that's more appropriate for the area in the Derby neighborhood. Unfortunately, the Salvation Army is taking longer time to sell their property, and that's 2.5 million, that's just sitting there, and we cannot be subjected to just wait and be at the mercy of the Salvation Army. But, you know, the resolution that was passed in 2022 asked the staff to look into new area for the Derby neighborhood in June of 2023. And we are in December 2024, so it's almost a year and a half that we have not done anything about the, the budget amendment. And since this was a pro funds, and we are moving to the general funds, I think it makes sense, since the intent was to be used in that Derby area, that we should be very specific and give some timeline to the Salvation Army. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Is there, are there further questions or discussion on the amendment? Alder, Figaro Cole?
Do we have anyone from staff that has the time to review this and provide feedback?
I mean, you could try the finance director, but Matt, look, Matt Walker's here. Matt Walker's the person. Go ahead, Alder.
Matt, do you have the language, the proposed language available to you?
Yep, I reviewed it. It's very similar to the language, as the alder said, that we've used in the past. So we've had deadlines for this project, and we were going to meet, we'll be close to the deadline and be able to close with Salvation Army. But they requested that we give them more time, so we pulled back on that resolution a month or so ago. So staff are meeting with Salvation Army in the next week or so to get a update on their timeline. But we can certainly, if it doesn't seem like we're going to be able to come to an agreement with them, we can reactivate our site search in the area. So yes, it's very similar to the place we were at roughly a year ago.
So we don't have a timeline today, so we cannot guess estimating a date with this, with this change?
So yes, so we're meeting with Salvation Army, I believe, next week to get that update on their timeline. They had requested at least a couple of months to review options after they got updated information from their contractor.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers, questions?
Yeah, for Matt, thank you, Mayor. Is this enough time, or should we extend the, this by another couple of months?
I don't know the answer. We fully negotiated the deal with, with them. So once they give us a date that they're going to be comfortable with, we would still have to go through our due- we would still have to go through our due diligence, but that's a relatively short process. But I can't, I can't tell you how long Salvation Army is going to request, because we haven't met yet.
Well, let me follow up, then. Is there any aspect of this that troubles you?
No, I think if we're making good progress with Salvation Army, I can certainly come back to council and let you know that we might need a 30-day extension, a 60-day extension. So I can certainly do that once we've had that meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. If there's no objection, I'd actually like to speak to this and provide a little more context. Is there any objection to me speaking from the chair? So, there's two, there's some interlocking things happening here. The first and most important thing is that this year-end resolution is attempting to make sure that the city spends every single penny of our ARPA allocation by the end of the year so that it cannot be taken away from us. And that's, I think, the most important thing that we're doing here. So I do not want anything to get in the way of that. Then, there are two incredibly worthy and important projects that we're contemplating here. And one is the construction of a new purpose-built women and family shelter for people experiencing homelessness at the Salvation Army site on East Washington. That is facilitated by the city purchasing the Salvation Army's Darbo Drive site. It is facilitated because we will be purchasing that at market value so the Salvation Army can take those funds and put it into the capital stack of the East Washington project. The Salvation Army is actively raising money for that project right now. However, like with all things, the cost of the project has gone up, and they need more time to raise that full capital stack. So that is why the question of delay has come up with respect to the sale of Darbo. The Salvation Army is understandably concerned with having space that they can use while their site would be under construction. So that's one complicated project. The other complicated project is the Darbo Dream project, which, let me say again, is an incredibly worthy and important project. They have been working diligently to craft what that project will be, to consider various sites, to consider if the Salvation Army site might be appropriate for them, or if an adjacent site might be appropriate for them. The city has been trying to acquire properties in this area to facilitate what might happen in the future. So we are working very closely. Darbo Dream is not ready. Yet. They will be, but they are not ready yet. So they are not in a position, I think, to come into the city and ask for a particular amount of funding out of a particular pot. I personally am committed to moving both of these projects forward, but within the confines of our existing funding mechanisms. And I believe that this amendment would take us outside of those confines. We collectively have decided not to line-item projects in our budget. We have instead directed those worthy projects to come in for our existing sources of funding, whether they might be the Affordable Housing Fund, or TIF, or land banking, or something similar. I would suggest that both of these projects can and should, and in some cases already have, come in asking us for existing pots of funding, and that we should let both of those projects work through those processes, but that it would set a dangerous precedent for us to line-item a project in our budget, outside of one of those pots of funding. So I would encourage you to reject the amendment with the full knowledge that myself and staff are working diligently with both of these projects to make sure that they have access to city funds from our existing funding streams, and will continue to work with them with the hopes of making both of them come to fruition in, please, universe, a reasonable timeframe. That will be a challenge, I'm not going to lie to you, but I think Director Walker and his staff are doing the best that they can to make sure that both projects move forward as much as possible. So I just offer that context, and ask you again here to think about precedent. Thank you for letting me speak from the chair. Alder Weheli on the amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. You just alluded to that both projects are as important as one or the other. And from your comment, you're indicating that we should allocate this funding to Salvation Army. I want to make a note that this Darbo Dream group have been diligently working with the city. In addition, they have hired a consultant that can really narrow their vision in terms of making the Darbo Dream project. And without the support of the city, or commitment from the city, I don't think they can be able to move forward. And the reason being is Salvation Army, you know, the amendment was made 2022 December, it's almost two years now. And from that day to today, there's no even moving the needle. And even Director Walker indicated, and you, Madam Mayor, also indicated, you know, in our private conversation, is the local office is very easy to deal with, but they're dealing with national office, which cannot have the commitment to move forward. The cost of the project is increasing because they're not making decisions to move forward. And to have our taxpayers, not taxpayer, but ARPA funds, 2.5 million, just to wait for the Salvation Army to take their sweet time to make the decision, I think it's unfair to other projects. In terms of equity, you know, I don't think it's equitable to wait for one project and then disregard other projects that are really working so hard, that don't have the capacity, building, hired a consultant to, you know, help them to bring their dream forward. So it's just six months, and these six months will just push the Salvation Army to have teeth in the game, you know, and just making sure that, you know, we're serious, you know, we are providing 2.5 million, and they should make a decision. We cannot just wait and see for their decisions. That funding could be utilized in other, you know, either in land banking or other area that can be available, and those organizations, or, you know, if organization is a president, then I'm happy to remove the organization and still say the Darbo area organization that work with those neighborhoods. Those neighborhood, Darbo area need revitalization. And one note I want to say is, I just want to, you know, apologize to my alder, Alder Martinez, she's the district alder. She wasn't there when I made the amendment, and I forgot to just bring this up to speed to her. So I apologize.
Thank you, Alder. I want to state very clearly for the record that we are not saving ARPA funds for any project. We are expending all of our ARPA funds by the end of this year. So I just want to correct your statement, that we are not saving ARPA funds for any project. And I also want to be very clear that if a Darbo Dream project is ready to come in and have a conversation about financial support from the city, that conversation can happen at any time. It is not tied to the Salvation Army project necessarily. And so that conversation can proceed. It doesn't require an amendment from the council. They, those conversations are ongoing. So it is, in no way is this particular amount of money, there's no missed opportunity here. There's, it is, if- We can have a conversation about the available pots of funding with any project that wants to come in and talk to us at any point in time, and that does not need to be tied to any other project. One possible path forward is to acquire the Salvation Army site and to turn around and work with the Darbo Dream on that site. It is not the only path forward. So there are opportunities, and those opportunities are all up for discussion. And Alder, I just, I really don't think we should go back and forth on the details of this.
I want to ask a follow-up question.
So for this, for, okay, if it's a question, yeah.
And based on your conversation, I think the conversation I had with Director Schmiedeke and Walker, they indicated that the funding is going to go to the general appropriation, but still, it will have the same purpose if we buy or purchase the Darbo. And what you're saying now is that money is just going to go to the appropriation and not for Darbo Dream or Salvation Army? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. And if we are able to do a deal with the Salvation Army, we will find an appropriate source of funding for that. If we are able to do a deal with Darbo Dream, we will find an appropriate source of funding for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin, question?
Oh, are we still on questions?
You know, we're somewhere in between. Go ahead, whatever you've got, Alder. You're calling the question.
Yes.
There's nobody else in the queue.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so what's before us is Alder Weheli's amendment. It's been moved and seconded. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing objection, we'll do a roll call. So all those in favor of the amendment, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Vitavir? No. Alder Weheli?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
No.
No. Alder Curry? No. Alder Duncan? No. Alder Evers?
No.
No. Alder Field? No. Alder Figaro Cole? No. Alder Govindarajan? No. Alder Ughair?
No.
No. Alder Harrington McKinney has left. Alder Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Latimer Burris has left. Alder Madison?
No.
No. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
No.
No. Alder Meadze? Aye. Alder Romo is excused. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere?
No.
No. Madam Mayor, I have three ayes and 12 noes.
With three ayes, the motion will fail. We're back to the main motion, which is to adopt the year-end appropriation resolution. Are there further questions? Is there further discussion? Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Alder Weheli requests a roll call, so all those in favor of the year-end appropriate resolution, aye, as your name is called, and no, as your name is called. I will note, this is a 15-vote item, and it is absolutely critical that we pass it tonight. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Vitavir?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Weheli?
No.
No. Alder Bennett is absent. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Curry? Aye. Alder Duncan? Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Govindarajan? Aye. Alder Ughair?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney is absent. Alder Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Latimer Burris has left. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Meadze? No. Alder Romo is excused. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Mayor, I have 13 ayes and two noes.
We need both of you to vote yes. This is the entire budget for the entire city of Madison. This is expending all of our ARPA dollars so that they do not get clawed back by the federal government. This is reconciling our accounts. I assure you that the projects you care about will be taken care of. Alder Weheli?
Yes, and one way to- And one way, I worked very hard with Director Walker and Director Schmiedeke, and it's just, we can put the money into the funds, and then it's just confirming that the funds will be there for those organizations. That's all I am asking for.
I understand what you want, Alder.
You know, it's almost two years.
We are trying to thread a needle here, and not break our precedent, and support good projects, and get the work of the city done that we need to get done. So I will ask again, to the two alders that voted no, will you change your vote to yes?
No.
Alder Field?
May I ask a question of staff?
You may.
My question is for Director Schmiedeke. I'm wondering about the provision in this year-end resolution that maintains the city's likelihood of eligibility for the expenditure restraint program in 2025 or '26. I forget the details. Can you describe what this does about that?
Certainly, Alder. This resolution is necessary to increase the amount of the budget for the city for 2024 so that the city can qualify for an expenditure restraint incentive payment of about $7 million in 2026. So without this, the city would not qualify for that payment in 2026 because its increase in its budget between 2024 and 2025 would not qualify under that program.
Thank you.
What's the million-dollar figure on that?
As I said, it's $7 million.
I'd like to note for the record that Alder Bennett is here. Alder Bennett, do you wish to vote on the item?
Yes. I vote yes.
Thank you, Alder. That brings us to 14 votes. Are you really honestly willing to cost the city of Madison $7 million? I'll ask one more time if anyone wishes to change their vote. $7 million.
May I?
Alder Weheli votes aye.
No, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I don't want to cost the city, but at the same time, because of equity lens, I think we have been bending too much for the Salvation Army. And I want to have a guarantee, even those organizations that were there, we intentionally chose Salvation Army that we knew they were not ready. And I am really looking into the equity lens and say, how can we level those two organizations? You said, you know, it's a president that we cannot give specific organization. Guess what? We are giving money to Salvation Army. We're naming Salvation Army. And when it comes to other organizations of communities of color, then we have to say, oh, no, we cannot specifically say that. So, Madam Mayor, I will, I urge you to reconsider, too, to put a priority for those organizations that have been working so hard in that area.
Alder, you have my word that we are working with those organizations, and we will find funding in the regular pots of money that we have-
I'm happy to extend the time, one year.
It is not an issue of the timeframe, Alder. And I will note for the record that we are not earmarking money for the Salvation Army. We are, no, we are not earmarking money for the Salvation Army. We are using funds to purchase property for the- We are using funds to purchase property for the city to use, which is something that we do regularly from many different property owners. So this, in particular, this purchase allows us to unlock multiple potential projects, one of which is Darbo Dream.
I swear, Will and I, I will work with them through everything. I want them there now, but they're not ready right now.
Alder Wiheli?
Which one?
Can I ask staff a question of who, residence-wise, will be most impacted by this failing?
If we lose $7 million? I mean, the entire city will be impacted. And as we discussed in the budget process, when we have to cut city services, that tends to impact low-income and communities of color the most.
And these are all federal dollars, correct?
No, it's state dollars.
State dollars, so not, so this is, okay, I think there's a lot of Robert's rules we need to go back to.
Yep, we're, we're very much in unusual territory here, folks.
So this is all state dollars that we're kind of in question discussion, correct?
Yes.
So this is all state dollars, so not all Madison taxpayers. And we just had a referendum where we discussed how we cannot continually putting the burden on Madison taxpayers. And now it feels like we have this opportunity to take state funding, and we're kind of just giving it up. So I'm having a really hard time why we, any of us would vote no on state funding right now, when we desperately need it and have been asking for it this past, like, cycle of referendum funding. I think this is very contradictory to the messaging that certain Alders have been giving over the past several months now. And I think it's very hypocritical and actually counteractive to any sense of equity. And this is the type of politics I think residents are really pissed off at us about. So I would love if we would pass this unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is my district. The Darbo Dream Center is my dream too. If I am elected again, I will usher this in every chance I get. Will and Becky are people I value so much, and everything they do, I've watched them grow throughout their years. I am committed to making sure that's going to happen. But if you, if this is, if you stalwart this, if this is stalwarted tonight, this puts all of the city in jeopardy. We have clawed and asked the city to give us extra money and time to fix this budget thing, and we're going to throw all of that away on positioning. It's going to harm it more, Alder, like, I, you are actually going to do harm to my district, and I take that personally.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Alder Wiheli?
All I'm asking, all I'm asking is the same commitment, and it's almost two years.
Alder, your amendment failed by vote of the council.
Yes.
So you can't, it's, that part is done. We can't revisit that.
Okay.
But what's before us is the end-of-year resolution, which must pass. If we don't pass it tonight, we are all collectively coming back to a special meeting when we can make quorum. This is not optional.
This is not helping any.
And I'm willing to sit here as long as it takes. Because I'm not willing to play politics with the city's finances. We have one job.
Commitment. Will?
Alder Knox?
It doesn't seem like there's any movement here, so I think the vote's been made. Kamikov, I mean, can we move on to our agenda? If we have to have a special meeting, we have to have a special meeting. I don't think you should be bullying people.
Alder Bennett?
So you mean to tell me that we got to come back to a meeting because some Alders can't get on board with this?
That's what it looks like, Alder.
And in a special meeting, what are we supposed to, like, talk about?
There would be one item, Alder, this item.
This item? So that they'll pass it again? So that they'll pass it?
Well, we need 15 votes.
Maybe.
So we're all going to waste each other's time based off of politics and principle?
That's one way to look at it. Alder Vitavir? I'm sorry, Alder, were you not, were you, did you have more, Alder Bennett?
Oh, no, no, no. No, I'm done, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's just, I will say, this is just so frustrating with all of the rhetoric that was coming out. We're willing to now waste $7 million of state money, which the state does not give us much money. For what? This is ridiculous.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitavir?
Moved to table the item to a date to be determined for a revit, to, for the council to rejoin for a revote for this item.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded to place this item on the table. I'm not even sure we can place it on the table if it's to a future meeting. I don't know if that is in order.
Be a referral. We use referral on set table, so be a referral to a future meeting. It could be, you know, meeting prior to the end of the year. We don't have a specific date.
Yeah. But thanks to former Alder Foster, we have to have a date. Yeah, we'd have to suspend that rule.
Well, you could also have a referral to a date, and the council could still take it up before or after that referral date.
Let me think about that for a moment, Alder. I think, well, let me think about it. Alder Wiheli, in the meantime?
Can the item be broken down and vote on, let's say, instead of the $7 million, maybe revisit the $2.5 million and...
Alder, it's all tied together. It's all one item. I mean, there's a million pieces of it, yes, but your amendment to change that specific $2.5 million failed. So it...
Can we put it back to revisit? Instead of losing $7 million and coming back, can we vote on that, the amendment?
So if somebody who was on the prevailing side of that vote wanted to move reconsideration, they could do so. But the, I mean, I don't know that, somebody would have to be willing to change their mind. It was a pretty conclusive vote. So...
10 people would have to change their mind.
Well, for the amendment to fail, two people would have to change their mind. So you'd have to have somebody who's willing to move reconsideration, and two Alders would have to change their mind on that vote. And to the, I'm sorry, does that make sense? So any vote, any prior vote that the council has taken.
Mm-hmm. Tonight.
Someone who was on the prevailing side of the vote, so somebody whose side won, in this case, the noes, can move reconsideration. But in order for the outcome to change, you'd have to flip eight votes to get 11 ayes.
Eight votes.
Yes. In order to get a positive vote on the amendment. So I suppose that's theoretically possible. It seems unlikely to me. On the question of referral, I'm going to try this, and the city attorney can stop me. I think we can suspend the rule that requires referral to a specific meeting and then refer it to a meeting between now and the end of the year to be called at a future date. So I think that would be, those, that would be appropriate. Alder Wiheli, I'm sorry, you weren't done.
Given what you said, and I want commitment, I want to vote. It's, I am a person who really cares about equity, and I felt like this was not equitable to wait, wait, wait for Salvation Army. If you're going to give me your words that equally those two projects will be a priority, then I'm willing to consider to change.
I give you my word that those two projects are an equal priority, and I want to make it abundantly clear that the Darbo Dream Project has not been waiting for the Salvation Army. The two timelines are not necessarily tied. The Darbo Dream Project has been working through what they need to work through in order to be ready to come and have the conversation with the city about funding and location. Nobody is waiting on the Salvation Army.
Can I say something?
Alder.
Thank you. So the original amendment was specifically in that area. And can the amendment have a bigger scope? And so instead of, instead of limiting to the fundings, but since you said it's, both projects are priority, then the original amendment was specifically in Darbo East Washington area. But if the staff can find other parcel or land, then that can be considered.
Alder, I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for your colleagues and why they voted the way they voted. But for myself, my objection is to line-iteming a project or a neighborhood. We don't do that.
But we did for Salvation Army.
We, we dedicated funds to purchase a property, not to gift to a project. It's a material difference.
Doesn't make sense.
We, we dedicate funds to purchase property regularly for multiple different reasons. In this case, we felt it was in the best interest of the city to acquire that property in Darbo Worthington. Unrelated to who owned that property. We have, in fact, looked at multiple properties in that neighborhood, attempting to purchase them, owned by multiple different entities. So the funds were not dedicated to the Salvation Army. They are dedicated to the purchase of property. And we, it is in my, at least in my tenure, unprecedented that we would earmark funds for a particular project or a particular neighborhood that is run by a private entity. We entertain conversations with projects all the time without them having earmarks, all the time. And we find ways to fund projects, some of them straightforward, some of them creative. This is a thing that Director Walker and his staff do. They are incredibly good at it. So when I say to you that not just these two projects, but many projects are a priority for us to support neighborhoods, that is how we do it, not through earmarks for particular I'll just pause again. If any Alders wish to change their votes, now is the time. Otherwise, we'll move to the motion to refer. Alder?
I'm happy to change my vote.
Thank you, Alder. The record reflect that Alder Wiheli will change her vote to aye, and that will give us 15 votes, and the item will pass. You have my commitment, Alder.
Thank you.
All right, so Item 69 is adopted. That will take us to Item 75, which is Legis 86251, amending the Parks Division 2025 adopted operating budget to remove the paid parking pilot and associated revenues and expenditures. On Item 75, Alder Evers?
Yes, Mayor, I'm wondering if staff is still here, if Eric Nepp is still around.
He is. Alder, if you are jumping into questions, then we need a motion first.
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt Item 75. Questions, Alder Evers? I'm sorry, Evers?
Yes, Superintendent Nepp on the call?
Yes.
Eric, you sent us a memo yesterday expressing your desired outcome. Can you just review that for us quickly, please?
Yes, certainly. And I apologize, I cannot turn my video on. But happy to go over. The memo outlines essentially that from, from the early stages of starting to think about how to implement this pilot and the feedback we've received. Sorry, starting the video. The feedback we've received already, it would be my recommendation to the council that we not implement a pilot, but, and so to adopt, not implement a pilot in 2025. I think the work plan implications are serious. At the time when the amendment passed, I had estimated Alder Rumel, and working with her, that it would be likely 300 hours of staff time to implement a pilot. I think at this point, given the obvious necessary engagement, it's going to be much closer to 500 or more. Given some of the priorities we have on our work plan, that's a significant concern. I did, in that memo, also highlight the need to think about alternative revenue, and there's obviously a desire for this conversation. I think it may be better suited for us to administratively work with other agencies. There are other agencies who have expressed an interest in this topic and working with us, transportation, specifically parking enforcement. And it, to me, feels like it might be a better use of a lessened amount of staff time in '25 to give this council a more complete analysis that would incorporate engagement at a later stage of that analysis through surveys or things like that. But that's the overarching quick synopsis of the memo.
Thank you, Eric. And can you also just briefly address that particular amendment that you suggested, that you specifically, as the wording is, be it further resolved that the 2025 Parks Division operating budget is amended to direct staff to provide a report on parks, parking assets, including potential revenue generation for these assets to the common council and Board of Parks Commissioners by April 1, 2026. Is that what you mean by saying that rather, that this is something that, yes, we should be studying, but not in the terms of the proposed pilot, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd also like to ask a quick question of Tom Lynch, our Transportation Director.
Go ahead.
Tom, you've heard Superintendent Nepp speak and wanting to work with other agencies mentioning parking enforcement. Parking enforcement's not here on the Parking enforcement's not here on this call, I don't believe, but you are here. Are you willing to work with Superintendent Knapp in terms of looking at TDM, transportation demand management, not just for private sector properties that we often think in terms, but also for public properties, city-owned properties, like parks and city streets and et cetera?
Yeah, we, we've intended to kind of study the payment for lots like Dutch Mill Parking Lot, the Winger Lot. And so, actually, when this was introduced, I reached out to Eric and said, we should talk and make sure that our efforts are coordinated, that we don't have two separate payment systems. Maybe there's a policy for which lots we're choosing, you know, not just revenue generation, but there's probably also, like you mentioned, TDM. You know, what are we trying to incentivize, and what are we trying to pass on the true cost of? And then, then there's a, there's a kind of a myriad of, you know, mechanical or logisticals, like is it a fee? How would it be fined? What were, are those types of things that parking enforcement officers think about? I don't as much, you know? But I did talk it over with Stephanie Cox in last week regarding this. So, it's, it's a little bit bigger issue than just, let's see if we can get $27,000 from people parking for a football game. You know, there's other policy implications, and then logistics associated with it.
Thank you very much, Director Lynch. Mayor, would it be appropriate for me to put into motion the amendment that I sent to my colleagues and to you, adding the whereas clause that Superintendent Knapp suggested and recommended?
Let's try this, Alder. Is there any objection to considering Alder Evers' motion to include that language, so as, to move a substitute with that language? Seeing no objection, the body doesn't object, that will be the motion before us.
I appreciate that, thank you. My questions are finished up, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro, call, is it questions?
Yeah, for Eric. Well, not a question, but a comment. So, I spoke with Alder Rommel. I don't know what day it's today, maybe it was yesterday, I think. I can't remember. And I suggested, I'm sorry on your behalf, that perhaps you can include this on the, you can include this update on your, on your superintendent report at the Board of Parks this week. So, the parks, the commission gets updated, and maybe we can put some set points in the future agendas for the commission to stay on top of it before it comes to council. Would that be okay with you? Eric?
Sorry, I was trying to find that mute button, it got late. Yes, that would be okay. I can, it would be a verbal report, given the commission meets tomorrow night.
Yep, so a quick, a quick note on that, and then we can kind of put it in future agendas for check-ins. And she was okay with that?
It will make it onto the future Park Commission agenda list.
Yes, correct, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there additional questions? Seeing no additional questions, what's before us is the substitute resolution, which would amend the budget to remove the pilot and include the language that Alder Evers has shared on the motion discussion. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. It's late, colleagues. We've heard from the superintendent that this is not something that they want to do right now. They've also said that Eric has indicated that there is a policy issue that's broader than just what can be accomplished in this pilot. We've heard from Director Lynch, a willingness, or, an agreement that this is a broader policy issue and a willingness to help. I'm asking that we rescind the paid parking pilot and instead move forward with this, this agreement that we've established here and this amendment that was put forth. So, I ask for your support at this late hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the substitute has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no, Alder Waihili?
No, for me.
A no?
Yes.
We'll note Alder Waihili is voting no. And with that, I believe that gives us 15 ayes. All right, we're going to, we're going to need to do a roll call to make sure, because it's a 15-vote item. So, all those in favor of the substitute, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Vitiver?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Waihili? No. Alder Bennett has left. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Curry? Aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Figaro, call? Aye. Alder Govindarajan? Aye. Alder Uguere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney has left. Alder Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Latimer Burris has left. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Martinez-Rutherford? Aye. Alder Mayadze? Aye. Alder Rommel is excused. Alder Tishler is excused. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Mayor, we have 14 ayes and one no.
14 ayes, the motion fails. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Alder Vitiver has jumped the gun and moved to adjourn. I would just like to note that, thanks to Alder Waihili, our next meeting will be in January. And so, I would like to wish everyone happy holidays and Happy New Year. And please go away and get rested and de-stress, and let's come back fresh in January. Now, Alder Vitiver. Alder Vitiver.
Moved to adjourn. I thought I already did.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing none, we are adjourned.